Like we are all here, welcome everyone. I will call the meeting to order at nine oh three AM. Their stuff is approval of the minutes. They had one possible full change at the beginning of the minutes were listened. The commissioners are listed as our name and then Board of Commissioners. And we might just change that to just Commissioner. In the first in our titles.
Looks like Rachel's taking that note.
Okay, so someone would like to make a motion with that change?
Move to approve the April land twenty twenty five minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. And that brings us to natural areas, parks and events.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it. A um. So to start, uh, I just wanted to talk about historic courthouse reuse. And this is something that I wanted to check in with everybody on, especially public works and community development along with the commissioners on kind of. Kind of where we're at, where we're going. You know, so um. Really, we've been through a process that took a couple of years. Commissioner Wise was a liaison for the Historic Courthouse Advisory Committee. And so that really brought together all kinds of um. Community leaders and travel, entertainment, justice, the arts, historic preservation. And you know, really, that process was to develop ideas, see if any connections could be made. And to kind of imagine possibilities. And ultimately, the final goal was to really recommend um. A specific use if one was found or make a recommendation as community members about something that we don't want to see. And ultimately, we came back with pretty much anything that we can find a way to utilize the building is acceptable. And so, but we had all kinds of ideas. There's, you know, from restaurants to boutique hotels to art studio spaces to. Continuing court-like functions. But I think now we're kind of at a point. Where we need to transition and start really thinking about kind of what's next and how we're going to approach it. Who's going to be at the table? You know, and so this is a big deal. That's a major, you know, between the Benton County, the old Commissioner's Building. The courthouse, the jail there, potentially Corbalis's new civic campus. This really has kind of a downtown vibrancy and economic component to it too for the whole area. So, you know, now we're kind of at a spot, we have some help going on right now. Matt Weatherall is kind of taking a little side project and helping to explore some. Groups that have been successful with this, the City Arts Group. They have a kind of a long track record of success in this area, taking an old factory, an old government building, an old school. And utilizing it and trying to kind of make those connections. But I really think we're kind of at a stage where we need to stop kind of throwing out possibilities. We know that it could be a whole bunch of things, but. How we put up kind of the good effort to find a customer or a use. Because I think in about two years, you know, I don't, I. Paul has been on vacation and we haven't had a chance to connect, but. You know, he gave a recommendation on what happens when we kind of mothball it initially. And that's not boarding up windows and making it look crazy. That's really just, we don't have any more court functions going on. We got to kind of reduce the cost while we figure out what to do. And even that comes with a pretty significant utility base fees. Needing to run that boiler system and heating system so everything doesn't mold and get worse. And so there's still going to be utility bills and everything. And right now, all of those bills come out of the uniform rental rate that we all pay for all buildings. And there's really no other identified funding mechanism for those additional utility bills and maintenance as of yet, other than continuing to pull that out of U R R. And so now we're kind of at a point where I think next steps will be to kind of come back. With any, any information Matt's identified in his kind of project and looking at what these other groups might be able to offer. But I wouldn't. When you go to some of these groups websites, there's a ton of success in the Midwest. Along the Mississippi River, you start to get to the West Coast, it starts to get sparser and sparser and sparser. Because we're all dealing with the seismic issues. And so a lot of the successful projects they've had on the West Coast are shorter than our building, two-story structures. Like a old, old classic high school that they redesign or something. A lot of the factories are about two-story structures. We've got the seismic element of the four-story structure with a bell tower, which is really challenging. And so. You know, I think, I guess what I'm looking for is discussion or maybe some recommendations you all have on kind of what you would like to see moving forward. You know, because I think there's definitely, we have to include the historic preservation element. We need an economic development there. And can we do this in-house or do we develop an advisory committee of some kind?
Just add real quick, Jesse summed it up really well. I think, you know, obviously, like you said with Matt, our hope is to get some good research and, you know, and. We talked a lot about, we need to do something on this, as Jesse said, you know. We're going to get to a point where the people move out of that and we're going to be done with our new courthouse. And we don't want to be sitting here still saying, what are we going to do about that? So I think that's at least initially a good start to move this discussion forward. He mentioned seismic, I think that's a. You've guys have heard the price tag on that before, it's probably now closer to.
Price.
Twenty-five to thirty million dollars, I'm sure, in terms of addressing that. So that that's certainly going to be a challenge. And then, you know, this dovetails directly into what we talked about during the budget and right sizing facilities. So again, this is all kind of Gary and I talked about the bigger look in terms of across all of the county. And also leveraging Matt for this, so this ties nicely into that as well. This is certainly. Probably the bigger challenge, obviously, and what we've, you know. What we, what we will need to do. I personally think that, you know, I've had some conversation with Paul Balata related this. And again, this is in the Midwest, you know, he's talked to me about some of the partnerships, the public-private partnerships that have been established. But again, I don't know if there is interest out there, I don't know if there are foundations that we can pursue. But I think we really just need to put a full court press on, on, on starting to ramp this up, so. I just wanted to add, and again, thanks Jesse for your.
Thanks too. Yeah, and so when Matt comes back, we probably will take that information and pair, start to pair that down with. Okay, if this is a group that could help us along and really get us a solid foundation for making this happen. You know, is there any grant that could help us? Is there any way we can get there? Can we get a private foundation grant to get us started? If it requires funding?
Yeah, I'll just say that, yeah, we have a ticking clock now. And this is, was one of the things that came up in my last town hall. And I think. I, I, I think people, now that we're breaking ground and we've been very public about the new courthouse is going up, which is the right thing to do. People are going to start, are starting to ask what's happening with the old one. And just saying, we have a report that has a few recommendations isn't going to satisfy people for, for long. So I think that, yeah, we have a ticking clock, so whatever, whatever we need to do to come to those decisions.
So. Some uses. I guess it would be helpful, what uses can we put in the courthouse that does not trigger the. Twenty-five million dollar bonus. And that's. Large price tag, and I remember discussions, several levels of upgrades and. It was ten million and, and they'll give the occupants two minutes to get out of the building. And if fifteen million, you, you got more time, but you'd end up with a pile of rubble or something. Not usable. After. Certain level of earthquake and then. The most money is okay, you're really shoring up the building to withstand. Oh, a major earthquake and. It's, it's just a tough one. Part of the reason there's no. No real proposal at this point is it's. It's not clear what, what, what we, what we can do. I mean, like you say, all kinds of possibilities, but. Looming size big price tag out there. You can go along. So if it's kind of office building kind of use, it does not trigger the. Seismic upgrades, whether it's government office or private. Office type use.
Think the way that it, the way that Chris Westfall understood it, and I think the way I understand it as well, is that it still has to be kind of quasi-government. Uh, quasi-government, quasi-judicial. Yeah, because a lot of ideas come up about, you know, could there be alternative courts? That's kind of where the justice system is kind of transforming to a little bit from. You know, but that's a challenging one because I don't know how much of that is in Benton County's purview and how much is Department of Justice. They would have to stand up those programs, we have to provide the space. And I'm not sure any funding would be coming in because I don't think that that's how it works, right? Yeah, so, yeah. That's, that's a really challenging one because that's one of the avenues that I think a lot of historic preservation folks are kind of thinking about. Because they see that financial challenge there with the seismic retrofit, they want to keep it in use. There's really no customer there, you know, there's no one that, we're still in the same financial situation, if not worse, because we have to. Operate it as if it's a functioning office. And so, you know, the, the easiest way out of the seismic retrofit seems to be one of the more challenging things to overcome. I, and I, my understanding of the kind of complicated Department of Justice documents. Even like soil and water conservation districts wouldn't quite make it, because it's not the judicial function, you know, so. Yeah, that's a challenging piece.
Also to your comment, the private side of that, my understanding wouldn't work, it would have to be some form of government type. State court standpoint, that's fine, but doesn't necessarily come with the resources. There's obligation or law for the county to provide suitable and sufficient.
There you go.
And so that's the challenge that is being there, doesn't mean that there are other government purposes perhaps, but it does. Makes some complications for us, which puts us back to, as you said, with the private side, then you have to decide. Restaurant, if it's some form of, of. Other museum or whatever the case, we have to deal with this.
Well, Jesse, it sounds like you've. Are using, there was a D L R presentation two or three years ago about. This is a common issue, common problem across the country. And I, I remember a presentation, maybe ten or twelve. Examples of conversion from courthouse function to meeting space or arts or. Is that, when you talk about Midwest examples, is, is that what you're working from?
It's pretty common, I think that's what we've seen, as, as the Midwest has a ton of examples, East Coast obviously does. West Coast is a little bit, Gary was involved with a few in Nevada that he was able to kind of elaborate on and the challenges with that one. And I think ours could potentially be more complex based on the age and style of the building.
You know, I was, when I was with City Reno, I was also the engineer for the downtown redevelopment district. And they had an old hotel right on the Truckee River, the Riverside Hotel. And they came in this group and artists and they made them into artist's lofts and this, that and the other. So they were able to circumvent certain things, but because it was a really redevelopment agency, they had. Maybe a little more latitude with things than if it was just a straight-up city or somebody else. But it, it was a very unique project and it, it took a long time to drag that one through the keyhole. And I, I don't know if the courthouse actually is set up to be artists, well, it's not. It's, you know, an old hotel in downtown Reno. Yeah, that works, but probably not the courthouse.
Yeah.
So what you're saying triggered the thought for me. The city is heavily considering implementing a TIF district downtown. Now, no TIF district is going to raise twenty-five million dollars for one project. But there, that. I mean, the courthouse is in downtown and the county does have a literal seat on the board that would. Or at least we have in the past on the boards that would make these decisions. And just. Thinking about that might be a potential revenue stream to do something. Wouldn't, wouldn't cover seismic retrofits, but it might cover some, some. Beautification or rehabilitation efforts because.
A new roof.
I mean, it's, I mean, we obviously are going to have to still address that.
We've got an RFP going for the, to have it painted, but yeah.
Yeah, because I know the city's been thinking about how they can use some of the TIF district for their facilities. And there's a lot of private industry that are interested in the TIF, TIF district for their downtown buildings. So I just. Keeping that in mind as we, as we have this conversation, that that's something that might be implemented in the next year or two.
That was my question.
Yeah, it wouldn't, and it wouldn't even have available funds for another year or two after that. And even then, those would be, well, actually. The goal is to get it in before the O B development happens so that it would suit, suit up the. The, the value of the district and the usable funds pretty early on, but yeah.
What's the translation on TIF?
Tax increment financing to urban redevelopment.
Jesse was kind enough to, you know, bring me in on this, I haven't been directly involved, especially since Ingle Williams resigned. About a year ago, but so I shared a couple of ideas that you've already thought about. But my, I thought my top recommendation was to really to get a high-level professional, like nationally renowned market analyst. To come in and do the real deep and dirty market analysis work at that level. And even to be able to pull in the opportunity for foreign investors. Because there is a niche market for historic buildings and foreign investors. I was on the board of E-Web's Child Development Center when they moved buildings. And we were able to find a foreign investor to retrofit that building. E-Web is E G Water Electric Board's child facility. And that was a total retrofit with, and we were able to do that through some connections. I don't have that, that network, but it exists. So just finding a connection to tap into those resources, I think is great. And then they like to work with municipalities. Because, you know, those are stable investments, right? So that was, that was, that's another idea that I had. And then just in terms of the energy efficiency things and that holding pattern. I mean, I know that you have a relationship with the Energy Trust, but batching an entire Energy Trust, large commercial building package. And starting to work on that, that has nothing to do with the seismic upgrades. But there's large cash incentives. That can actually be cash neutral over a five-to-ten-year period. For upgrades to boilers and lighting systems and things of that nature. And they can pull together some pretty complex, efficient projects. So that might be something that we want to look at as well.
Those are some great ideas, Patri, I'm wondering, maybe Jesse, we can talk to Matt. Now, you know, you know, his research is obviously to help us identify where are our opportunities that we need to pursue. So I don't know if you have, as you talked about these. High-level professionals, you said you don't necessarily have a network, but if you have any hint of, you know, who are maybe some of the places to reach out would be helpful. I do like your idea about the Energy Trust too, because there, there is a lot of money there. I don't know what's possible and it's certainly not going to, you know, obviously deal with seismic piece. But to your point, what kind of things can we maybe chip away at and work and find resources? So I think one of the things to talk to Matt about is to add those things to the list in terms of sort of complete research. Because I, I agree, I think at the end of the day, we're really going to need to. Pull in some partners, so you know, identify maybe some interest in groups that can come in and, and help. Because we will be able to chip away at some of the beautifications, some of the additional enhancements. We're never going to be able to solve all of it and. So thank you for those suggestions and any, any hints you have in terms of networks or anything around.
Yeah, I'm a couple of degrees separated from that a few years, but maybe the business or business organ might have a list or a resource. To tap into a list for RFPs for that type of work.
I agree, business organ, we have, we do a lot of work with them and so that would work pretty good too. I like that, well, thank you.
Well, it, it seems like we've. Done what we can in-house or kind of the. What resources we have and. Time to, I appreciate the discussion about looking for. Be more creative about trying to find partners. Because otherwise I can see two years from now, well, I don't know, what do you want to do? So. And. I don't know what kind of resources D L, D L R, you know, could bring to the table. I just remember their presentation about, well, this is what other jurisdictions have done across the country. And, and they, I appreciate, well, this works in the kind of east of the Rockies. But. We, we've got. Serious challenges on top of the usual repurposed. An old courthouse.
Hey Jesse, anything else on the Historic Courthouse or should we move on to McB?
Okay. We can move on to McB, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew kind of where we're at. So August nineteenth, we will be before the Planning Commission. And so we're all ready for that, that will be for the zoning and approval of our plan. So we have CAD drawings of what the campground will look like. We've made it through discussions with the state fire marshal. Talked to Gordon about stormwater, so we're getting a lot closer. Where we're at right now is, one of our crew is down there with a masticator that we get every year. And so that masticator goes onto the front of our skid steer. And we haul that out to natural areas and really cut back brush and stuff like that. So we use it all over, we use it at like North Albany County Park Natural Area, Dare County Park to kind of expand. The grass area, provide more trails and that type of stuff. And we're using it at McB to kind of cut down the understory on the roadside when you come into the campground. So that then we can get a surveyor out there, do road boundaries. And what that'll allow us to do is very. Meticulously try to save as many trees as possible before we have to cut the rest. We're going to have to cut a swath, we all saw it, it's, it's a very narrow thing that the fire marshal won't approve. But we're very conscious about trying to preserve as many trees as possible, so. So our process right now is that we're just kind of holding the line, it's available for day use, no overnight camping. We got those couple of established family camps taken care of a few weeks ago. So that keeps our continued use going, they had fun. You know, and so now we're holding it as day use, that work is, is ongoing. So at that point, we kind of. Own off sections of the campground so that there's no chance any kind of thing could spit out on you from the masticator. And after that, after we make it through the Planning Commission, we hope to bring the master plan to the board. It probably at the September second meeting potentially, or whatever meeting y'all would prefer. But that will give us some things to discuss and our hope is to give you that material ahead of time so you can kind of review it. And then we can all talk about, you know, the master plan has various funding options, various phasing options. And kind of all the different things, and that's pretty typical when we do master plans, it'll talk about. You know, what, what kind of customer level we need to be self-sufficient and keep that enterprise account running. And then it also talks about other funding opportunities for the park system and ways that we can fund that and expand upon it, so. And then if the Board of Commissioners approves or has any recommendations to change the master plan, we would do that, ultimately approve it. That's where I'd need to talk to you folks about kind of what happens after that for adoption. Does that go back to the Planning Commission at that point for master plan adoption or? But we can talk about that. And then our goal would be to hit a very late fall, early winter harvest out there. So the trees we need to remove, there's always an uptick or typically an uptick in prices in the fall. We don't really know how. You know, some of the opening of the B L M land harvesting and stuff like that will affect it. But we can break even and make a little bit on all the tree work we need done out there. And so that's something that's important because we need to do it anyway per the fire marshal. So that's kind of our timeline, so we'll be before the Planning Commission in August. Then we'll be before the Board of Commissioners in September. Now we'll have our chance to review, make any changes. You can tell us to hold off on, you know, different phasing and all kinds of different things, we can change the way we operate. But what we have in that master plan will be various kind of operational scenarios. You know, one with a camp post, one without a camp post. Some phasing and a lot more camping early, some is kind of taking our time. Some options have rentable picnic shelter, stuff like that, so. That's kind of the update, any questions on McB?
So. As far as the road, you have to cut a few trees to make that, but. There's enough harvesting going on somewhere else to actually have. Loads of log headed to the mill.
About two.
Okay.
Yeah, we're kind of expecting about two loads. Yeah, we're kind of expecting about two loads. Yeah, so nothing major. It's not some kind of giant operation, but there's a few spots where he needs them cleared away. And then we've got a small camping area up by Site Four on the ridge line that will require a little bit of cutting. We had a couple of proposals that could make more funding for the campground. But it were, it involved going onto that hillside and going into that area and yarding that out. And uh, so we had Trout Mountain write us a couple of proposals on what they recommended. That we then implement or added an addendum to our forest stewardship plan uh, with some of the recommendations on how to manage our forests out there. But one of the proposals, we just, we were really worried about the aesthetics of that hillside. And kind of felt like we're already doing this part. Let's not mess with that. There's landslide risk. It's one of the few spots we have that has a fairly significant landslide risk. We don't want runoff coming from the harvest into the South Fork. So we opted to keep it small and, and keep our fingers crossed that timber prices will work out in our favor um, and that we can break it.
Uh, work just in the campsite area and not like in any the other acreage?
No, we've pretty much already taken care of what we need to do for about the next 10 years in the McB Forest side on the other side of the road. So that's been thinned and prepped for kind of the next phases.
Even, I mean, you're out there and I've, I've noticed it's better than it was last time I'd gone camping there.
Yeah.
I mean, there were a couple creaky trees.
Yeah.
The wind blows and you're going, uh.
Yeah.
Safety is important.
It is, and a lot of those trees, you know, all the many, many years, kids going out there with their hatchet and, you know, nails so that you can string up the whatever. And a lot of those trees are in pretty serious decline. So um, the thing I keep telling everybody is that, you know, in 10 years, Commissioner Malone had mentioned this as well. None of us will remember.
Yeah.
That cutting, it's same as any campground. That was just a yakwa down in Sweet Home. And at one point they had to cut all those trees out to make that asphalt road and put in the restrooms. And you can't tell now, um, it looks great and it's fun to be there, so.
Sure, I know we had a question about, oh, let's put in water and then maybe not put in water, is that fluff in the air?
We're still going for it, we're gonna try, um, so the water will be on the McB kind of forest side, run downhill straight to the camp post. The camp post will have a single spigot there. It's one of the main reasons we want it is otherwise camp post is kind of a challenging thing out there. You know, we're already kind of pricing out like, what does a Starlink cost? You know, so that we have a way to communicate with them. Uh, there's no cell service out there, there's no power. Not the easiest gig to find a camp post for. So um, and our experience is we, we like to have a camp post if we can, yeah.
I just appreciate the tour.
Oh, of course, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciated being asked and I thought that was great uh, chance to kind of show off a few things. And um, you know, some interesting areas, being able to check out Irish Bend and um, and Cemetery as well. Okay, so um, early summer parks report and fair. So we are knee deep in fair planning and it's, it's complicated. There's a, there's a lot of different groups. This is Benton County's largest publicly attended event. It's got the Benton County's largest single day fundraiser. So it's a big deal for a lot of people. So next week, uh, we start horse fair. So currently uh, we're getting everything prepped. And a lot of that has to do with kind of checking electrical. Electrical is one of our biggest issues out there and making sure that everybody will be able to run properly. Different groups that we're organizing with, um, different volunteer groups. And preparing for the parking and stuff. So last year we made it, it was only about three days before fair that the grass field was ready for us to utilize and prep. And that was a super big challenge for us because we just had to basically work until, you know, we, we put on work lights and just stayed out there at night and worked until we were finished because we couldn't really keep up. This year, the weather's been so great, that grass is cut mode, um, we're ready. So um, that's gonna be pretty easy. And just a lot of little repairs and all the different things, beautification, corrections work. Crew is really helping us put a lot of dust bark and painting the rodeo arena. And um, we've got a volunteer group refurbishing the Irish Bend Bridge replica. Which is kind of a cool little relic, it's usually just rotting out in our south lot. We pulled it out, uh, stripped it down to the bones, volunteers are putting it back together. That was a donated um, materials um, from a member of our fair board. And now the group is getting that. So when you come in through the west gate and the Brandis Field, you'll be able to uh, kind of walk through a um, restored version of the Irish Bend Bridge. And uh, you know, on the wall will be, you know, kind of our classic old fair memorabilia. You know, some of the posters from 136 years ago, that kind of stuff. So.
That's cool. I've always, I mean, ever since I moved to Corvallis and would walk by it and I'm just like, what is that? Like, why is that there? So that's cool that they're making it nice again.
That's great. I, I think, I think we're gonna have a really great event this year. Some really interesting stuff. I think people are gonna love the butterfly and ladybug exhibits that we have where you walk into a tent and they're all over. And you can feed them and there's kind of an education element to those ones.
Those are not considered exotic animals.
They are not exotic animals, no. No, that's about as exotic as we get, and so butterflies over there now, but. So fair is going uh, well, um, and our fair manager will be reaching out to make sure that our commissioners get access to be able to see the folks and, and connect with all your constituents out there. So that's off and running. Also, um, so one thing that aside from fair prep that we're working on is next week, we start our summer camp. So we've got 25 kids, um, eight through 12. And uh, so we do that in conjunction. Uh, our National Resource Coordinator, Adam Stevens, leads that group. So he's a certified outdoor childhood education certificates and all that kind of stuff. And they've been doing this for years and it's very popular. And uh, we do get a lot of messages from the community about what a lifesaver this is. A lot of our uh, folks at that one come through a 10-person scholarship that we offer to that um, summer camp. And so those are rural residents that live outside city limits that are in need. And the kids are just so grateful. And usually their parents are extra grateful because especially right now, it's a lot of, you know, just playing video games. You're kind of isolated, uh, maybe you're not in town and get a chance to go to the playground or whatever. And so being able to go to our summer camp uh, is a big deal. So on Monday, uh, they start out at a dare. They do uh, archery, some disc golf, um, they do some kind of uh, tree identification stuff. Then they head to Fort Hoskins and do time travel. So they get to check out the old buildings. We have some historical preservation folks come out. We do background checks on anybody that's uh, involved um, to make sure that we're good for the summer camp. And uh, then I, on Wednesday, they head down to Clemens and uh, in LC. That's where they uh, pull out all kinds of invertebrates from the river and uh, you know, do all kinds of uh, stuff like that. Thursday, they head to Bazell for the day. That's where they do wild food foraging. So Adam takes them out and shows them all the different edible and dangerous species. So they get a chance to kind of find out what's edible, what's toxic. Then they finish up back at a dare for a bunch of different um, uh, events. And so it's a long week and it's a heck of a week for Adam. He's out there with, by himself with two um, City of Corvallis Parks and Rec, part-time recreation staff. And um, you know, driving the OSU vans, heading out. And it is looking really hot next week. So um, that's always our biggest challenge with these. We had one year where I think Adam had to spend a couple hours just giving sort of a rural Benton County tour in the bus because they needed air conditioning and that was about all we could come up with. So um, we try to make it as fun as possible. We get return customers every year. So kind of one of those little known things that we do that um, I think is really beneficial for the community. I know a lot of the parents, it's, and, and a lot of the messages aren't just thanks for the summer camp. It's like, we needed a break, this kid needed a break, this kid needed to get out and do something, I needed a break. And we get that a lot, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, something I think that we shall be proud of is that um, system. So moving along, um, uh, we've had a few challenges with a few water systems, but everything's running uh, well now. We had a uh, big issue at Hayek that shut down the restroom that required um, that was to our sewer main uh, that had backed up, so that was a lot of work. A Dare County Park historically is kind of famous for having tons of water issues. There's been multiple directors that I've heard of that owed $20,000 water bills because we've had a mysterious break that happens and that kind of thing. And so luckily, there's been very um, accommodating for that kind of thing. But I just bring that up because that's kind of every summer, even in the time that I've been here, we're hitting these old systems more and more. And they're doing a good job repairing, but kind of chasing our tail. A lot of this stuff is the original infrastructure that went in, which kind of, uh, just to remind everybody, that's, that's kind of where we're starting to focus is infrastructure replacement, um, because that comes up so often. Salmonberry uh, retaining wall that protects our boat launch uh, just has a couple little tiny parts to kind of make it look as nice as possible, but that's finished. So um, that was a CIP project from last year, um, our last biennium. And then Laurel and I are working on the ODOT uh, trails, kind of bridge crossing, multimodal work group.
North Benton County Communities Path Study.
Exactly. Exactly, so we're working on that. Working with everybody here too, also on uh, the TGM grant uh, which is a transportation grant that we're talking about right now. That uh, seems like it's something that we should apply for, that also includes a Trails Master Plan, um, TSP update as well. So we're kind of in discussions on that, um, to pull everything together in time. I serve on a couple other uh, work groups for the Corvallis Bike Park and the Osborne Pool. Both of those projects are going along uh, pretty much gangbusters. Corvallis Bike One, we have one more uh, open house. We've got an open house for our grant coming up uh, soon. And then also the Owens Farm Work Group. So just a lot of busy. But um, it's exciting because this is all recreation, natural areas and transportation based stuff that we're all kind of working on together and kind of keeping that collaboration going with other work groups.
Jesse, can I jump in on?
Yes.
So the north, uh, good morning, by the way, Commissioner. So that open house is gonna be August 14th and it's gonna be at the Shovel and Middle School from four to six PM. And really the east-west getting over Highway 99 is pretty set. There's not a whole lot of spots to do that, but it's the north-south alignment. Whether it's better to go on the east side or the west side of the highway. And so at that open house, we'll be looking at giving feedback from people on that alternatives analysis. So just a little morning.
And the neighbors seem to be pretty vocal about what they think and it's been great so far. Yeah, so, so listening to a lot of feedback. Okay, and then lastly for miscellaneous, I had a few things in here, but one of them I wanted to talk about was Jackson Fraser. So um, where we're at right now is really talking to the state about how much we can utilize out of our current grant before we give it back. It has gotten to a point where I'm getting extensions and we're kind of pushing our luck. And I, I really do, in talking with them, their recommendation is you rank number one before, you'll do, you way further along. You'll rank number one again, but reapply. Turn this one back, we'll take that money, put it into the kitty, and then we can reapply again. So now is trying to figure out what else could we get out of this grant? Because typically I can't just take a quarter of the money and then not finish the project. But they've had really good funding, they've been really supportive of this project. So um, it's made it kind of easy uh, in that regard, um, to find out how much more we can squeeze out of there. Otherwise, um, uh, we'll turn it back in and start prepping for the next phase.
Some of it?
We've been able to use some of it, yeah. Yeah, it hasn't been, it hasn't been everything and they've been able to make accommodations and I think, but there's a limit to it, right? I mean, I don't think uh, can't, you know, we could spend all that money just um, hammering out, getting closer to very final design. We're at construction phase, or construction document phase, but we could even may take it further. But um, so it probably won't be anything major, but things like if we could get a signed design out of this and have that in, in the hopper for the next grant, um, that would be um, that'd be something we'd be looking for, so.
The grant cycle, is that annual or biennial?
Uh, let's see, for the large local government grant, it's annual.
Annual, okay.
I believe.
I appreciate that they're saying we'll score high again. I just, I've always been nervous when they have no way of actually promising that.
That's very true.
Yeah, so, yeah, but the, whatever we can use, okay.
I think the thing is though, typically they offer, you know, I think, I don't know if it's hard and stone, but it's like two six month extensions, maybe three. We're starting to get to four, five, six here, uh, you know, and so it's, 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 it's kind of, it's time to reevaluate, so.
Yeah, and I, I get the trust, but it helps, I think. Us kind of going to them and being of, with, right? You know, this is our situation and uh, perhaps offering to not, not renew versus just they're taking it from us because they don't have to approve the next extension might help us down the road. I, we're just at a crossroads where if we don't have additional funding, we're, we're just gonna lose the money. And I think this approach is at least saying, okay, we're trying to be a good partner here. You know, release it and, but I give it, you're, you're a hundred percent right.
Yeah.
But I think it might help us.
Yeah.
Jesse has a really good relationship with this, so.
That's right, and there's been times where they told us not to turn it back. They just said, just hang on, we're, we're kind of hoping that we'll get this funding and they just like, no, just, just wait. Uh, we'd rather see you complete the project, so let the, you know, congressional cycle play out and see if we're able to get any of that funding, so.
I'm glad we can blame it on the feds.
Yeah, exactly.
And uh, who are you dealing with? I mean, it's a state agency.
State, Oregon State Parks.
Okay, and, and it sounds like good uh, relationship and communication and.
They're fantastic. I serve on a couple of their other boards to pick grants, uh, various grants. So do the Veterans of War Memorials and um, some of the tribal grants that they do. And so um, yeah, they just want to see awesome recreation stuff happen in Oregon and this is one of them. So they're, they're pretty easy to work with. Yeah, okay, and then.
And the idea is, oh, the grant was for about 600,000?
650, yeah.
And so split some of that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And, and give the remainder back and apply for a larger amount next time?
Yep, and some of those were requirements of the grant. So because there are requirement, we still get reimbursement no matter what, you know, stuff like archaeology and whatever. So um, that's kind of where we're at, is to see how much we can maximize it. Because we're in the same boat, we don't want to give away any grant that we have, uh, you know. But if, if kind of a refreshed look, and we also did this before, we were a lot further along in the design. So I think our in-kind match, we might be better situated than we were before with a reapplied.
Oh, sure, because the project's further along, yeah. Closer to shovel-ready kind of approach. Well, uh, I, I appreciate the update and, and it seems a little bit like the courthouse, old courthouse discussion is and try to figure out how to uh, get the rest of the funding so we can um, move this uh, project along.
Yeah.
Seems like recently you mentioned getting some decent sized donations, basically unsolicited. And, and seems like if we um, maybe have the capacity to um, do some actual fundraising and, and to um, put a little uh, life into the project and see if we can um, get it to the, uh, at least closer to the dollar amount needed to complete.
Yeah. Well, the Alliance for Recreation and Natural Areas has a dedicated fund, so anybody. Well, the Alliance for Recreation and Natural Areas has a dedicated fund, so anybody can donate and it goes directly into that fund that garners interest. That they won't use for anything except for a boardwalk rebuild or a specific Jackson Fraser Habitat Restoration Fund. And so, yes, we did just recently received several sizable donations, some over $10,000, some several thousand dollars. And so it's pretty great. We've been, we've been bringing in money for several different projects through donation processes. And, and all of this has been largely word of mouth. You know, when you go out to the wetland, we have an Afra post there where you can scan it and find that fund and go straight to it. So some of them are just people walk in and they do the QR code and see that they can help and then think about it. Some of it's through Afra Board Membership. And so they're reaching out to contacts that they have, talking to Green Belt Land Trust, talking to Ben Community Foundation. Maya Abels is somebody who's been helping us along. She is a longtime nonprofit leader. That has a lot of really great recommendations on how to launch a larger effort. And so I think that's a bandwidth thing a little bit for Afra and us. Nothing that we can't overcome, but I think in the past, some of the guidance had been, don't start your effort until you're X close. And then you can really launch it and then it's worth it. So, you know, kind of hold off. We might decide to go a different route and just keep the donations flowing in and see if we can't get there, even though we don't kind of hit some of those best practice guidelines for ownership. So that's something that, you know, Alliance for Recreation and Natural Areas would love to be a part of is a little bit of a bandwidth issue. Cause it's not easy to kind of maintain that connection you need to raise funds and to manage those funds. Make sure we're sending out, you know, the tax letters that people need, all that different kind of stuff. And so, but it's something that we could, we can do, and we've been talking about it a lot and kind of been preparing for a larger kind of outreach effort. Yeah. So I think that is all I have. Is there anything else we want to discuss today? All right. We'll see y'all at the fair.
Do you got piles of those two dollar things or is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We got piles of them. Yeah.
I'm thinking about taking some to my town hall tonight.
That's a great idea. We'll make sure you get some. I'll have them dropped off there and make sure everybody gets access. So it should be tons of fun. We're excited. You know, I think next couple of weeks are going to be a marathon for us. I mean, it's just kind of nonstop until after fair. But excited to do it. I think we got a great team and they're really kind of excited and pumped. It's kind of a new team. They only have one fair under their belt, you know, so it's, I think they learned from last year, excited about this year. And now it's just kind of keeping it all together and not going nuts before, before it's time to open.
They did amazing, even though it was the first, they did an amazing job.
I thought so.
Just not.
Yeah.
Those battle of the bands.
Seven bands ranging everywhere from folk to metal. It's going to be an interesting evening.
Which, which, which day is this again?
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay.
Yeah.
That has to.
Well, and. This was. Instead of paying money for a medium name band on Thursday and river, river rhythms, say that. Twelve times. Competition and I think it was last year, we can't remember the name of the band on Thursday, you know, we, we paid them money. And, and the grassy area in front of the van was empty.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think the idea is try to do different fans on Thursday night and see what might work. And just came up with a different, different idea. And I, I think that's, that's great.
Yeah. So that's the day, that's the day of our jail tour. So we'll have to tell the sheriff to get us back in time for the battle of bands.
Do we shorten the fair this year? Has it always been three days or did you speak for?
Wednesday through Thursday, Saturday.
Four days.
It is four days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a Wednesday. Wednesday is great, gee, because that's free family day. So fam, kids get in free. We have all these really funny kind of interesting acts on the main stage. So that's a cool night because there's just blankets of kids sitting out there. But you're right, Commissioner, we needed to change it up on Thursday. We've had too many kind of slow Thursdays in front of the main stage. And so changing it up, we have somebody reach out that, I don't know, next year they, they want a wrestling ring out in front of that. So there's any tag team. This is, no, this is, this is like Hulk Hogan kind of wrestling.
What a good idea.
Okay. Take a quick break like five minutes.
We can go ahead and get started again. And next up we have Public Works.
And I'm going to turn it over to Laurel and she will do the update on TSAP and maybe a couple of little projects that we've got going on.
Thank you. And some of this may be repeat information, but I'm just going to go through them. So the Transportation Safety Action Plan, we have had three task force meetings so far. And yesterday we actually had our first stakeholders advisory meeting, which includes the other jurisdictions within the county, City Monroe, Adair Village, Flemish. As well as Campbell and Ambo representatives and an ODOT rep. So where we're at right now, they identified our high injury network, which looks like crashes and where most of them occur. And then we're kind of whittling that down to a high priority network, which means like about 10 projects or corridors that we'll focus on. Providing improvements and or we'll also look at policy and procedure changes within the county. Just some going to the past, we had an open house in April and also an online comment map, an online open house. And on that online comment map, we had 6,480 views, which was actually really good. And this was combined with the city of Corvallis as well. We had 811 total comments and out of those 811 comments, about 171 were for Benton County specific. So like about 21, 21% or so were for Benton County specific. Most of the comments were around driving and biking, speeding, of course. Some of the other issues that came up were intersection visibility issues. And so we went back to the task force on one of those meetings to try to. Get to a couple emphasis areas. So how, how would we take that high injury network down to just 10 projects? And so they wanted us to look at risky behavior, which would include speeding, distracted driving, alcohol, drug use. Roadway and lane departure, bicycles, and then also intersections. And so they went in, put all the information into a little black box, did some analysis, and then it spit out several corridors and also intersections that we're going to be taking a look at. The two main quarters that came up, not only in public comments, but also in, well, as the high priority network or Independence Highway and Belle Fountain Road. We currently have a project scheduled on Belle Fountain Road, so we're going to kind of look at that as we move forward. The consultant right now is looking at suggested improvements on those corridors to see, you know, potential solutions. Like is there like one certain thing that might be causing crashes, whether it's, you know, a hill that blocks view or it's a curve and people leave the road. So there's certain things that the consultant is going to look at to see those crash determinations and see if there's solutions that, that they can come up with. We'll take that back to the task force and kind of get their feedback on it. And then also have another open house in November, but move, move to the point of where we're looking at potential solutions. They're going to put like a systemic toolbox together for us as in here, you're looking at an intersection with problems. These are like the four things you should look for kind of thing. So that way we can improve safety really throughout the county transportation system. And one thing that I want to emphasize with this, this safety action plan is really, we're going to use it in conjunction with any maintenance projects we might be doing. So as we look at Belle Fountain Road and one of the main concerns is we don't have shoulders south of airport. Well, we would look at trying to implement some of these. Improvement projects along with maintenance. So that way we can, it's kind of, you know, making the most out of your dollars simply at that time. You're there, let's do it while you're there. And so the next, we're, we have two more task force meetings. And then we will have another stakeholders advisory committee meeting in probably October and another open house in November. And that's when we will be getting feedback on those recommended solutions for the high priority network. And that's about that. Our, we need to have it finished by March of 2026. And we seem to be in line with the schedule. So I think we're doing well. Are there any questions?
Were there any comments, do you know off the top of your head about scenic and specifically that section? There was one person who commented to me a while ago and we forwarded and had a whole conversation about a mirror up on scenic being, but we don't do mirrors. Yeah. And, and that, that section, that, those section of houses that come out on that one.
Right.
One singular street. I don't remember what the number was, but.
Yeah, it's like fifth or 27.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there weren't any crashes at that intersection. So it didn't come up on the high injury network. And even the, the one intersection that we had a lot of comments on scenic was the Oak Grove Gibson Hill. Because it's kind of, they're offset. So it's really hard to kind of manage that intersection.
Okay.
But even that didn't have severe crashes. So it's, it still could end up on a list just because of the public interest in it. But yeah, scenic, they're. Um, but yeah, scenic, there, it's, it was more in the, the lower curves.
Yeah.
There are problems.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't surprise me that there's this, I mean, we had a fatality there just not, not too long ago, but, um, yeah, I, I, I think about scenic sometimes because it's got a lot of flying corners. I, I have a friend who lives in that section and whenever I leave from visiting them, it's incredibly stressful uh, to know that cars are coming around real quick, but I, I appreciate that, that there haven't been accidents there or, or collisions there. So that's, and that's what a lot of this is based off of is collision data.
Yeah, it's data driven, uh, specifically. Yes. So that's where we start. And then we bring in the public comments and, um, kind of vet it to see, are there other areas that maybe don't have crashes? But really are safety concerns need to be addressed.
Yeah.
So that's how we pull those other areas in.
As we do, and do we pull this from, um, um, sheriff and police reports or is it?
So it's from ODOT, um, which is a compilation of all those DMV crash reports that the sheriff gets. Um, we also look at, the sheriff collects some other information as far as where they pulled people over for like DUIs. Um, then we can also look at those locations, but that would be more like, oh, there's a crash incident here. Oh, weird, they're all around two AM, you know, is somebody over serving over here? And so is that a policy or education outreach piece that we can do? Um, so we, yeah, we look at them. They're looking at a lot of different factors.
Okay. All right. And my last question here, near misses don't typically play into this because they don't get reported. Right? Okay.
And that's why, again, you do the com- public outreach.
Yeah.
Because then people, when they looked at the map, they could say, hey, I've had this experience. I live out here. I see this every day. Sure, there aren't, you know, there might not be reported crashes here. There's a lot in your misses. And so those, those are how we're incorporating those through the public outreach process.
Thank you.
And yeah, and we're not telling people, you know, that it couldn't ever happen or, you know, it's just that there's areas that we already know are worse and we got to focus on the worst ones first.
About, yeah, prioritizing the, the money.
Okay, uh, courthouse DA and EOC, um, good news is, be quiet, that, uh, the probably depending, the pressing issue we have right now with the courthouse is we need to get the overhead power line that goes to the clubhouse removed. It goes right through the middle of the building, uh, aridly that is. And, um, unfortunately, the power company dropped the ball a long time back. And so we're making up ground now, but we have paid them the fee. And we hope by the end of this month, if not sooner, they'll have that, that old line down. All the conduit and the wire to relocate it is in. So it goes up Carson Drive now. Um, I believe Hoffman has even improved what will eventually be the new access road to the clubhouse and then to the old driveway. And they'll connect in where the power is at now. So, uh, OTAC is working hard on that to get that done. And, and we finally do have a, a PPNL project manager that actually is, uh, answering our calls and helping us out. So that's good there. Um, probably in, I'm going to say the goal setting for, uh, August, we'll have an item to discuss how you want to kick off naming things out there, the site, buildings, um, so forth and so on. Uh, at some point we'll want to be able to put some kind of, we, we have a monument sign already approved out of highway twenty. It's just right now it's showing up blank. Uh, yeah. And so just how to go about that. Uh, and there'll also maybe be some other considerations for, uh, probably not that yet. Did, there's, we're going to have a plaque for the Swick House inside. We'll need some help on that. We've also had a request from the McFadden family to put in a plaque for the grandfather, great grand, who, he was the first judge.
Yeah.
So, you know, that might come up too, but right now we're concentrating really on what you all would like to do to name it. So we'll have some, maybe just some discussion points and we'll kick that off.
The judge, a commissioner and maybe man?
He was kind of like all in one and, and work track owner. I don't know. Um, but anyway, so there'll, there'll be a discussion on that coming up. Um, and the other thing that we've had come up recently is that the owners McFadden have put in for a zone change on their property, uh, on the parcel they got from us there that, that went back to them, the nine acre parcel to the east of Carson. And then a chunk that kind of mirrors that as it crosses into theirs and then, and then borders up to HP. I want to say they're asking for like a downtown Corvallis type zone to go, kind of a mixed use to go on there and the road. But, um, side to that, um, I think HP has heard and seen that the road that goes Carson Drive was going to tie into their road. I'm not sure that was well received. So, um, I think Rick and I are something, we'll be meeting with some folks from HP and, and somebody to just understand our part of it and our understanding of it, which is kind of limited. But I think it really goes, we'll go back to the city, but just that's out there kind of brewing right now out there. Uh, EOC plans are in. Uh, I think we, we paid our electrical permit. I think we're just waiting for one more. Uh, but it'll go pretty fast, uh, cause it's like, like I said, it's a fairly simple building, but you know, so far things are going well at the courthouse. Um, next up is Benton area transit. Um, we will be seeing you in the next month or so to kind of do the follow-up, um, report on the information they've gathered on the self-perform assessment with some recommendations that they'll be bringing up. That seems to be going well. Um, we, I had a meeting yesterday out at, uh, an establishment, uh, to talk about a proposed route change, which actually is a Corvallis route, uh, to accommodate, uh, the use of a facility out at Country Club and Highway twenty. Several facilities, a fitness facility and some others. Um, and it, it really is a city of Corvallis because it, it involves, uh, Paloma connection and CTS to make that route change. Where we get pulled in is that Country Club is ours. And so one of the proposals is they would put bus stops and a crosswalk on Country Club, reroute the route along Country Club and, and something, um, some lighting, some signal crossing and other stuff. Um, and, and Laurel and I have looked at that logistically, physically, financially, that's a pretty tough slog out there, I think, to try to justify it. But we're working with Corvallis to go through that. Also on the other side, of course, is ODOT. And they're more than happy to support all these ideas, except they're not going to pay for it.
Yeah.
So we're in that kind of, especially now with the way things are there now. So, um, I think the meeting was productive. Um, a lot of information and, uh, we'll follow up on that. Uh, I, I don't see it happening. What I did find is that through our contractor, Diala Bus, Benton Area Transit is providing about fifty rides a week. Or for, for customers who qualify for BAT, taking them to the facility and then taking them home. So in a way we were already providing service there because they qualify under the, I think sixty five and over and some other parameters. So that with BAT lift, we are giving them rides already. So that's where I'm not quite sure why a bus stop would work better, but you know, sometimes I just think too much. So, but we'll do some a little more due diligence, but it's out there and, uh, the proponent of the, um, one of the proponents is Nick Wallace. So a lot of information, we're digesting it and, and we'll, we'll have probably more to report on in the next update. Um, let's see, Alpine LC sewer, uh, we should have ninety percent plans by September. As a side note, uh, the, the, our representative with EPA is still there, uh, in Olympia. She's the only one. Uh, and so Casey is being taxed heavily to keep things going. So originally we thought we would have an answer to our grant by the end of July. I think it's what she proposed. Uh, now we're probably October-ish, just because it's taking her longer to get stuff prepared. She's doing the job of two or three or how many people that get things working. But, uh, she felt pretty good about our chances because the NEPA is coming back in good shape. And it's just a matter of processing it through the, the whatever, you know, hoops they have to process that through.
This is just really the, this is just really the compliance component to, to, because we've already been sort of earmarked for this money.
Yeah, yeah, this is getting the permits. Yeah, getting the permits so that we can enter into our final agreement, that they can then release the funds. So.
I probably should know this, but in terms of, wh- what does this do? Cause this is a grant that goes back how many cycles too? And, and what will it do to the end? Does it change the end time on this? So are we going to like get the grant and say, okay, you have to have it spent six months?
No, I, I think we're still within the timeframe that was with the original grant. Um, so we're doing everything we can. And, and the plan.
If they continue to wait, are they going to put you in a place where you're going to have to spend the money immediately?
I kind of asked that and she didn't think that that was an issue. Yeah. Um, and like I said, with the plans, it's a parallel trap. So the plans are getting done. And once they're ready to go, we'll probably now, we will for sure probably have those finalized and ready to bid when we finally get our money. So.
It's really one.
And now it'll.
Yeah, that's sad. If they have any compliance people to actually even review.
And there's that, yeah. And we're fighting that in all these, these, uh, issues here. Uh, same with the Innovation Mobility Grant, um, that has been turned back to the state. We have, I think, said that we are good with the agreement that they proposed. I think it still had to go to DOJ, yeah, DOJ, um, something, something. And we originally thought we were going to have that by the end of July. It's now probably August, or I mean, September, October as well, because it's all backed up. And that's even before the announcement, you know, about layoffs. And so we're not quite sure who's on first, what's on second with, uh, with ODOT staff. Um, but we have put that in play and that will be for the study that we'll look at assessing the viability of a rural shuttle. Uh, uh, a couple of days out towards the west, a couple of days to the south, try to tie it into what we already have with the other, uh, programs that we have in place.
This was that grant when Mr. Wallace was kind of initially approaching you all about being able to continue that long distance and Gary's solution was to apply for this, obviously isn't provide immediate support, but it does enable us to look and see where there are other opportunities to get out a shovel to some areas. So.
Um, so moving along with that, uh, other grants, I talked just a bit about the EPA grant, which is for Alpine and LC. Uh, the electric vehicle kind of in the same pattern, uh, in the holding pattern. Uh, we do have approval to buy the vehicles, which is a whole process in and of itself. But the actual charging station is the one that we're still held up on there. Again, they're very hopeful that it's, it's minor. It's, it's literally the need was a couple of little trenches. You know, that's all that it was. And it's, it's clear that it's just going through the steps within the agency to get boxes checked and approvals granted so that we can move forward with that.
Be at the Sunset Building?
That's the, the charging station is at the Sunset Building. Yeah. Which would then they.
Have we been waiting on that?
Oh my.
And so I have like before I was.
Oh, fine. That was, that was, that was a defazio grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how long ago we got that one. And it took forever to even hear back from ODOT and or, um, federal transit. And then when we did, it was like, that was last summer about this time or thereabouts. Well, you have to have this money spent by October if you can. Well, which October, I mean, you know, so we, we had, we did. And, and again, the folks at the state that are running that, they've been very helpful.
Okay.
But they can only do what they can do. And then it goes to the federal folks. And that's again, another, uh, pinch point right now as well. Uh, last one I had is our USDA or Monroe Clinic. Um, update on that is Paul received three RFPs for the architect engineering services. So they're going through and evaluating those now. And once they have, uh, a preferred, uh, firm on that, that I'm sure they'll have to go through some, um, contracting, agreement approvals with, uh, USDA to make sure that we're doing it the right way and meeting their standards. But that they will then proceed with putting the site plan together uh, and getting the plans to like a, and, and actually planning the facility and then putting those together to get to about a thirty percent plan level that then USDA will use to say, yeah, okay, yeah, no. You know, and keep, keep the ball moving there. But same with the USDA, I think the only one there now is, you know, it's down to one person in the tangent office, maybe two. So, um, you know, and I, I've mentioned this maybe us, but out of, out of all that, we've been the benefactor of getting a couple of really, really great soon to be former federal employees. Uh, our, our analyst comes from BLM and I, I, somebody that's had that kind of experience with the federal side will be just, oh my, so helpful, so helpful for us. Cause you know, Laurel does, she, she's like the grant meister. She finds stuff everywhere. But it, it, it takes time and, and you know, we've kept a very small staff. So bandwidth wise, it's really hard sometimes to keep up with them and we don't want to get ourselves in trouble. And then be on a list where then all of a sudden, well, we're not going to give them any more grants because they can't handle the ones that they have. So, uh, great hire. So I mean, we're very fortunate. Same with the other one for health.
Yeah, no, I'm so excited. I mean, the, the B, the BLM is going to be assigned to Public Works, Ally Tishak. And she'll start on August first. She is, has over fifteen, twenty years, uh, at, at the federal level, mostly BLM, uh, and military. And then the other one has even more experience and concern from the EPA. Um, and so she'll be working on the health side. So I'm thinking maybe we could leverage her on the EPA, uh, piece. So we're really excited. She'll start September first. She, uh, is still working through some kind of transition. But yeah, we really fell in our lap on this one.
And, and these are in addition to, uh, a couple in finance?
These are, these, so these are the finance. It's, it's sort of, uh, helps us to fill the three voids, the, the three vacancies, two of the three vacancies we have. And so, yeah, um, excited about getting them in. They're going to be great.
So any questions on others? I'm, I'm not ready to launch off on the miscellaneous here and if you have any other questions before.
Can I just add real quickly on, I, on the, Gary, you talked about the courthouse. We are seeing some progress being made on the funding, from this funding agreement. Thank you for your help with, uh, Brayfield's office. I think we have at least gotten some movement. We got the agreement actually back. I think it looks pretty good.
The, the FAGE agreement is pretty good, but then they threw in an amendment to the original master funding agreement. And it's like, say what?
Yeah.
And, and so that's where I think we're still trying to discern what we had before and what's changed because they went through and deleted a couple of sections and then, and then said, here's your new section. And I don't know if that new section contains, uh, something we don't buy. Yeah. So, so Vance is working with them and trying to decide why do we have this amendment? Why do we need it? What's, you know? But just, I mean, we're this close and.
You can't afford losing. It's like we've been waiting, waiting, waiting on the phase agreement. Now it looks like a phase agreement is almost done and they do this amendment for the MFA. So, so.
Did we make someone mad later?
Well, I, I think this is very consistent in talking with a couple of folks that worked with, uh, OJD and, and DOJ on the Multnomah courthouse. This, this is how it rolls and, um.
My understanding, some of, I'm guessing some of those changes in the master funding agreement are somewhat linked to the work with Clackamas courthouse project. And the DOJ may be insisting on some changes. So again, hopefully like Gary said, we will find that there isn't any substantive changes that throws everything back into lag because it took us forever just to get the master funding agreement done. So, um, fingers crossed on that. Uh, the other couple of things I just wanted to add to Gary's report was, um, uh, just as a reminder on the Monroe clinic that he has spoke to, um, we have one point seven million dollars of funding that is helping to support the work that he's talking about. Also a reminder, we are in that appropriations bill, um, with Merkley and Wyden for the one point five. That would enable us to be fully funded. So I'm just putting that on your guys radar if you think about advocacy and any opportunities for us to talk to the delegate. Talk to the delegation to kind of encourage. Obviously, that's still a lot to take to move through. And then. The last thing I just wanted to mention, because I had a quick update with CFN this morning that's related to to transportation. Is to just ask a little bit about what's going on. I think you may have seen the governor's press release. That basically has put pink slips out to ODOT employees with terminations on seven thirty one. Nobody knows exactly what the plan is going is going to happen, but there is speculation. And I just quote speculation that the special session could get called before July thirty first. That seems like a tight timeframe. There's a lot of pushback, yeah, obviously for the legislature wanting to be on vacation. There's no requirement for them to come in, but for between a rock and a hard spot, I guess is the best thing to do. So no really new news here, other than we just need to keep watching to see what's happened. And I think the governor is wanting to add some pressure on getting the legislature back in adjournment or to get back into session. To make some decisions around transportation.
Well, usually when there's a special session, all the details are worked out and it's a one day. Approved this package. It's all neat and tidy.
This is very tiny. It seems, it doesn't seem realistic to me, the idea of a special session between now and seven thirty one. But you know what's going to happen with the ODOT? I mean, was it three hundred fifty employees, I think?
Well, five hundred.
Was it five hundred?
It's a thousand. They're not filling vacancies. I saw that yesterday.
Oh, yeah. This is actual real people getting notices, I believe. I don't remember. I thought it was three fifty, but. But you're right, Pedro, ultimately, in terms of the position authorities, the house.
Yeah, it's crazy. Maybe another opportunity for us to get some good employees.
So.
I can see not the big transportation package, but what they came out with on the last day of. A relatively modest increase to the gas tax and yeah, maybe including cities and counties. In whatever they, so a nickel going forward and. Having ODOT get their three cents to kind of a patch. So they can keep working on the big transportation package.
Yeah, there were so many ornaments hung on that tree. There was no way it was going to stand up. And, you know, for us, it's pretty basic. We need. Our our cut to do our road maintenance. And of course, the 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 increase they would have proposed, or we hope, comes from the. Transit tax, payroll transit tax. But I appreciate Commissioner Shepherd and all the folks that rallied together that last afternoon. And went over and and shut down that three cent only for ODOT proposal, which was. And that was mind boggling to how we ever got to even moving that forward. But anyway, thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, if 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 staff appreciates it, because. Better to go with what we have and something like that that just sends us so totally the wrong message.
Yeah, when, after speaking with some other contacts, staff and legislators and the like afterwards. It seemed like none of the House, very few of the House majority wanted to even vote on that bill. And we're taking our concerns seriously, but they were under incredible pressure from the governor. And from their, potentially from their leadership as well, to vote yes. They were, you know, the the messaging that came out was the the passes are not going to be plowed and people will. Hundreds of people are going to lose their jobs. The passes will not be plowed. It's real safety risks. You have to vote for this and ignore your local governments. And so I think that in any negotiations first in the short session. I I think that the representatives and senators are going to have more leverage to include local governments. Than they had in the last three hours of of that one day, you know, last few hours. Yeah. So.
You know, the Association of Orange Counties worked incredibly hard. Kat and I were on the Transportation Community Development Steering Committee. And I mean, their staff met with every single legislator over the session and just advocated for this. I mean, it's been a huge effort, several disappointing, but. At some point they'll. Figure it out.
So just in the way of miscellaneous, the big news for Laurel, actually for Public Works.
Oh, yes.
Is our thirty six plus year county surveyor is retiring. Cementa newsletter last day is July thirty first. So Joe Martis is gonna gonna retire. And good for him. You know, I mean, it's it's he's been here a long time and done a lot of great work. So we're making plans for that. We'll recruit for the new one pretty quick and we'll see where that lands. Paul told me yesterday that he has received the Funding Budget Code from Health. Or the Sweet Home Clinic remodel or upgrades. So that will be a project that he's negotiated, gone through the process with Gerding. Well, Gerding will be doing some significant improvements out at the Sweet Home Clinic that we took over. I think we moved buildings. Six months ago, eight months?
Yeah, I think so.
Somewhere in there. So we've been working with that for quite a while. And then the other really, and I can't remember if I shared this, but we have learned that the city of Corvallis has stayed with Benton County Fleet. For all of their services. And to me, that is a huge, huge win and speaks volumes for Devon and Keith. Before him and all the work that has been done to take care of Corvallis. But we we heard that the parks person and whoever, because it wasn't just the fire that worked with us, it was several groups. They really said, just don't. So we were really happy to have them.
So Gary, is it Lebanon is the only one that left?
Lebanon Fire is the only one left. There's a couple of others that have left, but they actually went with. Was Dallas or somebody that they were smaller groups, but but Lebanon was the only larger group that that has left us with this last one. So, yeah, very, very big for our our staff.
On the top of your, how many organizations are we serving that are outside of Benton County now that Lebanon left?
I'll have to get that for you. I I don't know. I mean, it's. It's more than a handful. I mean, we go clear down to South Coast, folks, Depot Bay, Newport.
Okay, so it's still, it's still quite a number. And we're no longer, like with the new formulas we changed, we're they're paying. Pretty close to market rate, right? And we're not.
They're paying market.
Paying market rate and we're definitely not, and we're not subsidizing them out of, okay.
We will be watching that extremely closely, but Gary's absolutely right. We're at one ninety one now.
One ninety two.
Ninety two, excuse me. And that's right on the market. And so for for the first time, at least in my tenure, we are, we are, we are aligned with market. And we'll be watching this closely, but I don't anticipate anymore.
That's great. And thank you for all your diligence work over the past years on that. I know it's been a roller coaster and it's been something we've got criticism on. But I'm glad that we stuck it out and got to a point where we're good, even though we had to supplement the part of the money and whatever. It gets still, I would still make that decision again.
Yeah, I think we're at a very good place now. I mean, and and we have, I think, good information to work from and we can pivot. And even here's a big one that that you all approved a while back is that we we don't have to set the rate at the start of the biennium. And then and then keep it for two years. We we will look at it. In fact, we'll begin looking at it here at the first of the year to see what we need to do. For the for the July first twenty sixth rate. And it's just to make sure that keeping up and not getting too far behind and and losing money. So, yeah, it's been quite a process.
And having to raise rates significantly in in one.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that really got us, because by the time we had to raise rates when inflation came and that first big jump, I I understand. People, they think your budgets and they get it set. But even that, we try to get out way in front so that they know what we're anticipating in. You can make it part of your budget process. I think Corvallis is going to do a two year budget now. In fact, I'm surprised how many are going to two year budgets now. But just try to get it out so that they know what what's going on and and make good decisions for their their constituents as well.
Commissioners, if I might just to add to Gary's fleet discussion, it'd be appropriate to 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 raise this or at least make you aware. Obviously, we have an external fleet and an internal fleet and you know how we have to do balancing in relation to that. And we approved our budget on the basis of internal rates that each of the departments have have established. So it's a balanced budget as we go into twenty five, twenty seven. The Sheriff's Office has made us aware that they are or have been putting out RFP. In relation to seeking alternative internal fleet services. I've talked to the sheriff about that and certainly we want to, you know, leverage that the the best we can in terms of understanding. Are there other opportunities and models? I mean, Gary and Devin have been talking a lot about how to reevaluate our existing fleet. And see are there some cost controls and things like that can be put in place. I think it's still appropriate to make you aware that, you know, we have a balanced budget at this point. And certainly any decisions related to alternative type services throws all that out. And would 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 have to be reevaluated pretty substantially. The Sheriff's Office is primarily general funded department. And so these are general funded dollars that are given to the Sheriff's Office to pay the Public Works Department. So if something changes, that's going to be a conversation we need to have to figure out what do we do. In relation to, so I, the sheriff is aware of this. I've made him aware. And I know some of you guys have probably been in part of those discussions. I've tried to keep, you know, Gary in the loop on this. He's weighed in and provides some input. I think it would be important to have we involved in that, just to provide expertise. Along the way. So I've been trying to facilitate that. To make sure that there's good insight and input into that process, because it can be valuable. It can be valuable to 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 the Sheriff's Office. It can be valuable to us as an entire team.
I think.
So, so I just wanted to put that out there for the three of you to, you know, what's happening and we we could be.
Sure. And it's, I think it's, it's a good exercise and it's good to know. I learned something from that process. One of the things that changed this year is incorporation of fuel costs. Is that?
We actually split it out where it's, they're paying for what they use.
Yeah.
Much like we used to do with veterinary transit. So, you know, we don't know exactly how much they use and they're charged appropriately. It was before it was baked into the rate and kind of averaged. And there were some vehicles that were.
Yeah.
Way over that. So.
So my understanding is that they use a lot of fuel. So that is one of the contributing factors to why theirs went up this year. So I mean, even if they go to outside fleet services, they're still going to have to consider the the fuel costs, right?
Correct, yeah. Make sure we have apples and apples all the way across the board for comparison purposes.
And I think the thing is, is they go out and evaluate this. The thing always have to be careful of when you ask for input from a outside party. Is they can look at it from a point in time. But what we have is sort of that experience that goes along with. But I think as you heard during the the Budget Committee discussions is that these vehicles get wrecked.
Yeah.
And so so to that extent, it's sort of a catch up is if you have a lot of vehicles you're doing major repairs on, like Devon had talked about. You're seeing the cost against what they're actually collecting and that has to be adjusted as time goes along. So if you're a new company coming in, you don't have that history. You may say, well, I can do for this until you start to see all of these other things occurring. And so I think this is something we need to all be thoughtful about as as we go through. And and again, I've had good conversations with the sheriff and he's aware of this and.
I completely understand budgets and saying, oh man, this is a tight budget. And shoot, ours went up. This is with you. So I can appreciate that one least.
Well, and in the time I've been Commissioner. When this discussion started, barely opaque what costs were. And he was in a box. I don't know if it was a black box, but it wasn't very. Clear what the costs were and and we've made a lot of progress through the years. Getting a much better understanding of what our true costs are and trying to line them up with. What we're charging and and we were always behind. And I'm surprised, oh, okay. And I think going to a annual adjustment of what we charge just makes sense. I mean, that things are moving around too much to anticipate. Well, if you're accurate accurate today, you two years from now, you're more than likely going to be too low. I mean, I I do appreciate the effort. I mean, this is a complicated, a lot of, a lot of moving pieces. And to accurately reflect what the costs are. I think we're, if we're not there, we're really close and and have made a lot of progress.
To wrap up, I I'd like Laurel to just give a little quick update on the Culver project we're doing this summer. And then maybe a little quick update on the Roundabout project that is how it's going for next year.
Down to a couple of other ones as well.
Okay.
So the first one that I wanted to talk about was the Corvallis Albany or Lloyd or Rainwater Alignment Analysis. That we have a consultant picked. ODOT is also leading that process, but it's stuck in DOJ. So we're hoping to have a kickoff meeting probably in August. So that's going to be another public outreach process that we'll be doing over the next eighteen to twenty four months.
Does that mean you you hope to have the contractor on board by August?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And they've been identified.
Yes.
It's not a surprise.
It's not a surprise.
They were identified in December.
Yeah, a while ago. It's been taking a while to get through. With the statement of work and going back and forth with ODOT, they they have a price agreement. And it's been going back and forth a lot through the ODOT liaison and the and the consultant. I've been just kind of watching from the sidelines waiting.
So we're we're close.
We're close, yes, yes. And then the Culver project that Gary mentioned, so out on Norton Creek, there's a timber bridge that has. Reached its end of surface life. So we are removing that bridge and putting a multi plate culvert. And our own road crew is doing that project. And so they've done several of them and they're they're actually pretty excited to have a culvert project this summer. They haven't had one for a couple of years. We're going to be doing some fish salvage on Monday. To make sure we get all the rare and certain species out before we start doing work. There is a detour around the project. So if you hear any complaints, there shouldn't be, because most of the property owners have been notified. But sometimes it surprises people. Yeah, tracking salvage, yeah. Yeah, but Shay's going to do that for us. She's gone through all the training. Well, she's a biologist. But she's gone through all the training and she she does that for us. We have a couple of interns that are excited to go watch that process too. So.
Hey, so where's that location?
Norton Creek. It's off of Highway third, no, wait, twenty, out towards Rin. That's as specific as.
What was, west of Rin?
West of Rin, yes. Let's see, the Roundabout project, we have also kicked that off. We have a consultant working on the Roundabout Southwest Country Club in Fifty Third. We just have them kind of assisting us on placement of the Roundabout, how big it needs to be. And then we'll take it back over and we'll do the in-house design for the road approaches as they come into the Roundabout. And the the ideas, we are trying to get to construction next year. This project has been kind of, I don't know, delayed. The main engineer that was working on it left and went to another job. And so that's why we needed to bring a consultant on. And so that's why we needed to bring a consultant on, because we didn't have anybody else with that in-house expertise. Um, but moving forward, and we have, yes.
Is it, is it likely to be similar to the roundabout on Western Fifty Third?
Um, yeah, West Hills and Fifty Third.
West Hills.
Yes, it will, it will be similar to that. Um, there's a couple of minor differences, just because we're more on the urban interface there. Um, so there's probably going to be more curbs on it versus um, I don't know, some of those mountable ones that we have to direct traffic. It's it's going to be more urban than a rural roundabout. That makes sense, see once, I guess.
Uh, I I had a comment from a uh bicyclist that that the roundabout on West Hills and Fifty Third was well-designed for pedestrians and um bikes.
Yes.
In addition to cars.
Yeah, and part of that really was because of the task force that we put together all those years ago. Um, they had some really good recommendations on how to address that multi-use path, adding extra room for two cars, so that way the roundabout isn't, you know, held up. And then also the median at the multi-use path is actually a little bigger. So that way, if somebody with a bike and a trailer had to go across two lane or two, across the whole roundabout, they could still have enough room to refuge before they cross the second lane. So there were some good design considerations we got from the public.
Easy to maintain too, the way the slope up to the land that he's on. By the way, if anybody sees that, we had somebody run through it again with a tractor or monster truck or something, so somebody keeps driving over the top.
Yeah.
Uh, keeps taking our tree, we can replant the tree in July, so we'll replant it. But you know, you get calls about that stuff.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Oh, spiky rock.
I was just gonna say spikes.
We don't need a tree, maybe we can talk about something else, you know, yeah, but, you know, I don't want to do a spiky rock, but it's, yeah.
Uh, well, that's good, I, and that's, so the roundabout is in the county's TSP?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, cause I, so back when I was the city councillor, the city's TSP, I remember the Ward One councillor at the time saying, well, I don't, this shouldn't be a roundabout, it needs to be a light and therefore it got changed in the cities. But not in ours, I guess.
So, um.
And it doesn't matter to me.
Right, yeah, I would have to, the, at least how we've done it in our transportation system plan is we'll just call it an intersection improvement or like some sort of traffic, not a traffic signal, but a traffic device, which can include a roundabout or traffic city, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, I think that's how Corales probably would have done it, but I don't.
And I, I, if, you know, the roundabout works really well on West Hills as we were just talking about, so I have all the faith in the world. We do have constituents that are interested in.
Various, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I know we've had a lot of 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 calls about that one and the way it's configured, it is a perfect use of a roundabout to clean up that.
Yeah.
Offset intersection and what Laurel's referring to is, is we both have to do an analysis to determine what is the best use. And so if she's going and almost say, well, it's going to be a signal, well, wait a minute, did you look at anything else? But you need to go back and look at, so the analysis usually proves that, but we knew right upfront, pretty close, that it was probably going to be a roundabout and it proved to be, that's, that is the case, so.
And so that'll be, it'll improve like sight lines and do we already have all the right of way and everything that we need on those? I believe we will have need to require some on the southeast corner. Um, but most, like the development, Camus Commons on the northeast, they uh dedicated additional right of way years ago. And then the Fifty Third Flats Development, we had them dedicate right of way for enough for a roundabout there. And then last project is the Nineteenth Street Grind and Inlay. Um, we have a knife, no, sorry, who's doing that? Specific excavation, so many different, Knife River is doing the paving, but it's specific excavation, that's the general contractor. And they're replacing twenty seven ramps, but after a site visit, it might be more like forty one, no, sorry, thirty, not forty one. Um, because there's some intersections that they're going to have to make changes at. Um, and then I think there's been emails going around. Um, the city of Philomath, kind of at the last minute, uh came to us and said, wait, why aren't you doing this raised crosswalk? And and I was like, what raised crosswalk? Um, so I evidently they had done a safety study for the Nineteenth Street corridor associated with school. Um, and but the county was not a part of that study and so I didn't even know it existed, unfortunately. Um, we met with City of Philomath Public Works staff about two years ago. And at that meeting, they asked us, hey, is there any way you can put off the grind in the inlay? Because we need to do sewer water retrofits, so we said, well, sure, no problem, we can do that. Um, but nothing was mentioned about a raised crosswalk or raised intersection. Um, I had one of our engineers look at it to see if there's any way, hey, can we, can we do something? Um, but unfortunately, there's storm drainage and a cold catch basin out there that would need to be completely redesigned. Um, a, we don't, the county doesn't allow speed bumps on our roads. And so a raised crosswalk is one that uh transitions like further out, so that way it's a little more subtle as you go through it. Um, but that actually ends up, it would put it half in the driveway for the school. And so that didn't quite make sense design-wise, so raised crosswalk was kind of out. It would need to be a raised intersection, which is similar to what we installed at Chapel and Nineteenth Street, just down the road. Um, but uh that is significant design-wise. Like I said, we already have a contractor on board and so I would be happy to work with the city of Philomath. Um, maybe we could look for a safer routes to school grant or something like that uh for future projects. But just right now, we we can't, the only way to accommodate that would be put off the project for another year, which, you know, will increase costs and we would probably have a claim from the contractor, because they're already under contract, starting work. Are there any questions about that particular? I know the city of Philomath won't be happy, but.
Uh, I appreciate the background and 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 that it's, it's been uh looked at and, you know, it it sounds simple and, but it definitely isn't.
Especially with the drainage, if there wasn't a storm drain right at that area, catch basin, that curb inlet, it probably would be more simple, but it just, we would have to retrofit the storm drainage probably as well, so.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, it's the mayor of Philomath um brought that to our attention and we've had a couple constituents reach out, I just saw on social media yesterday, another person complained about almost being hit in the crosswalk. Um, so, yeah, it is, I mean, Cor- or Philomath did their whole study and it wasn't just Nineteenth Street, it was
It was.
multiple streets, but yeah, then they did not uh communicate with us, is my understanding. So hopefully we can work with them to keep those communications better. Um, and yes, I, I think both the mayor and I were looking for, what are the exact details? So that we can explain to people accurately, you know, something besides just, eh, we can't do it.
Right.
You know, because then people say, oh, you can't or you don't want to.
Right.
And I mean, technically we could, but like you said, cancel the contractor, probably get a claim, extensive redesign of the storm water system. Um, sounds expensive and time-consuming. Um, did you have any other questions on this? Cause I have one other sort of related question.
I, yeah, I have a few on on this one.
Okay, well, so we'll go ahead.
Um, the storm redesign, do you have a estimate of how that, how much that would cost? Um, like, or is that a thousand dollars, ten thousand, a hundred thousand? Like, what, what ballpark is that kind of redesigned?
Don't know, uh, mostly because when we do the grinding in late projects, we don't go out there and do a topographical survey where we figure out exactly where curb lines inlets are, um, where the lines run. So I don't have that information. And so it it's not, wouldn't be hundreds of thousands necessarily to redesign them. Um, but I I don't have a good feel for that.
And would that have to be the city of Philomath's part or that's our?
It it's ours, because Nineteenth Street is still county, so.
Okay, so then my question is, has there been any ideas or conversations of uh a road vacation, like giving them the road and then they can do whatever they want to it?
Right, uh, for the city of Philomath, we have not had those conversations lately. Um, it was about eight years ago that we started transferring, like for instance, there was a piece of Thirteenth Street that we transferred to Philomath. And so it's, it's could be the right time to talk about transferring jurisdictions, so that way they can be in better control. You know, they can use city speed control efforts that if they want to do that. Um, especially since the road's going to be basically brand new. It's something that I think Gary and I could potentially talk to the city manager about.
And then, so it sounds like the raised intersections or the raised crosswalks are, would be a an extreme challenge to get to at this point. But am I remembering correctly that there might be a couple other things that could be done, like the striping or?
Yeah, we are doing some of the um suggestions that were in the safety study and that was narrowing lanes with paint, providing an additional buffer um right next to a parking area or the drop-off area in front of the school. And we are going to replace the delineators that were out there. So there's, there are a couple of things that we're, we're going to be able to do with this project.
And there were some, the additional work, wasn't there some passwork that you had done?
Yeah, when we, when we urbanized Nineteenth originally, like fifteen years ago, um, we put in those curb bulbouts, so that way the crosswalks are shorter, um, and then made room for parking. There used to be parking on both sides of the street and so we narrowed it down to try to help with speeds, so.
And then, yeah, the other concern from people that live on that street that I've heard is the truck traffic.
Right.
So, which is kind of a separate issue.
It is, um, we don't have a designated truck route per se through Philomath. Um, I know that Thirteenth Street is very challenging. I've heard that, like through the Safety Action Plan, we've talked to some um contractors that move large equipment and they're like, we just can't use Thirteenth Street because they can't make that turn. And Nineteenth has problems because of that grade break, uh, there's uh trailers that sometimes high center.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, there's definitely, yeah, challenges that we're, we're looking at. Um, but I plan on taking some of those concerns back to ODOT because that is along their highway. Um, and talk to them about that, the specific turning radius on Thirteenth, to try to, maybe they can make some modifications to open that up the traffic to use Thirteenth instead of Nineteenth.
Right, just seems silly to put truck traffic down a school zone, yeah. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, so I'll say, I want to say a few things. I'll start with, yeah, I, the city and the school board should have engaged the county earlier because it's our road, but I I'm disappointed that we won't be able to help them in 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 a way that they feel that they need for, to keep, keep students safe. I do think that the, having a conversation about transferring the jurisdiction of the road after we finish it, like you said, it's going to be a nice new road and typically that's, that's the holding point for most cities about taking over the roads, is they want it. They want it nice, uh, so having that conversation so they can put in those traffic calming measures, I think that's at this point, the best scenario. Um, and I don't know about designating, uh, what, what's the process for designating a truck route?
Well, it's a good question, um, that's also something that we're kind of looking at for our Safety Action Plan. We're looking at Fern versus Bell Fountain, if it sense to find a designated truck route through that area.
Oh.
Um, and also in the North Albany area, we're looking at Independence versus Spring Hill. Um, we haven't set freight routes in the county, mostly because all of our roads, most of our roads, we're set as farm-to-market. They're supposed to move freight, they're supposed to move people and public, but also market commodities. So it's, it's hard to say, no, trucks can go this way if there's no viable al- al, you know, alternative.
Yeah, I just, when we're getting to these urban centers, you know, it makes me think of uh Lebanon, right? Where they have their, they have their truck route to to go around the city essentially.
Yeah.
And um with Philomath, I've, I don't want to be sending trucks through school zones and 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 things like that through the urban center off of, off of the highway if they're just through traffic. Um, so whatever, whatever we can do to alleviate these concerns and kind of work, work on this street, I, I I would be supportive of that, of those efforts and whatever we can do to find ways to to help out. Um, so yeah, I, I guess the, what would help me to tell people why we can't do the raised cross, crosswalks is a ballpark estimate of how much it would cost to um uh to redo this, the the systems that we need to redo, a ballpark estimate of the raised crosswalk and then be, or sorry, not crosswalk, at the raised intersection, because you said that's very expensive and would cancel our contract essentially and we, yeah. There's a lot of issues with that one, um, but uh so, and then being able to say, well, we're going to have these conversations to transfer jurisdiction so that we can do that. So those are like the three, the three things that I would, would be helpful for me to talk to councillors, the mayor and residents out there. Yeah, I'd, I'm not asking for a comprehensive study, I'm just how many digits are associated with it, I mean, that's, yeah.
Are you okay in like a general? Does it sound like without, can you provide just a general outline, is that?
For a range.
Or, yes, right.
Yeah, we'll be able to, as well Commissioner, we have a a certain amount of money that we know, we are, our project budget, where we're at with that and what that would do, then that'd be great to the overall budget, which I think we'd probably, if I'm not mistaken, throw it over the top, but I'm only
Guess.
Yeah, that Laurel will be able to to better um uh delineate all that.
You, you have the bid at the screening.
Oh, no, they're under construction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I'll go back to our Chapel Drive project where we constructed that raised intersection and that will give me good cost estimates for that particular. I'm just going to have to figure out what kind of design and how much storm drainage system we need to.
Thank you, yeah.
Then I have an email chain that Rick is into that lays it out pretty concisely, so I can forward that to you too, just so we have all of this information.
That's that as well, she absolutely helped indicate that to me, but she'll be able to, as I said before, see a lot better than me.
Thank you.
I want to note that this is probably the first time that Public Works has gone over their since I, I, since I've been here, it's like, I'm not sure I'm proud of that, but uh.
Stuff to talk about, we, we had a break.
Yeah, a break, oh, yeah.
I do have a couple, uh, the Cardwell Hill evacuation route
Yes.
still on schedule for this fall.
Yes.
And uh, the engineering's done and you know.
I think we're working through that right now. Yeah.
And and it's basically uh giving up on shoring up.
All the work would be on the uphill side.
Yeah, the river.
Yeah, we're staying, we're good, stay away from the river.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I think it was mentioned earlier, uh, the uh ninety-nine W uh overpass by Jackson Fraser, what's the uh status there?
Yeah, that's the North Bitten County Communities Alignment that we were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, so DEA is the consultant on that project and we are moving forward with an open house on August fourteenth to try to narrow down where, whether the north, south, east will be on the east or the west side of the highway.
Right.
So that's, that's moving forward.
But then, there was a million and a half dollar grant that ODOT is managing and
Yes.
that's
One in the same, yeah.
moving forward and
Yes.
But, thanks.
Sure. All right, next up, community development.
So let me kick it off here, because I will say that this list is put together by me, uh, obviously Paige has been up to eyeballs with landfill. up to eyeballs with landfill, getting that all set, which has been remarkable effort. Um, and, and so I know some of these, you've had recent updates on them, like the floodplain, solid waste. So I think that we can probably just skip by those unless you've got questions on those. Um, and then, uh, I have a page to do the Coffin Butte and a couple of other ones. And I guess the plan if we can. And then, uh, just the status of the citizen advisory committee, if we can tag team the personal updates. And I think Rick might have an update on the enterprise permitting. And then, so maybe we'll catch up and be done here. So.
Yeah. So just, um, reflection on the brevity of the, um, community development report really is a reflection of the fact that we've accomplished so much in the last year that we've come to the end of our major projects on time and on budget. So we're in a lull and now we're waiting for the next round of funding. So, um, it's really a celebratory time, um, and a little bit of break, um, in that workload. But in terms of the Coffin Butte, um, expansion, we had, um, our fifth continuance, um, hearing last night, and we will go into our final hearing this evening. Uh, and so, um, we do need to finish that public process and close that public hearing. The record will remain open, um, for seven days and need additional seven days, um, for response. And a third, seven days, uh, to finish that process. That's a simple summary, um, of where we're at with that. Um, come back with a final, uh, recommendation on the twenty-second. And just, uh, based on what the planning commission decides to do, if it's an approval, um, we will need to come back to the planning commission for a final time on the twenty-ninth, uh, to present those final findings, um, as amended. At the twenty-ninth, um, if it's a denial, we won't need to go through that final process because there'll be, uh, findings that were far more simplified. But, uh, there was a reversal on the recommendation from staff from denial on a technical basis to incorporating, um, over, well, nearly two thousand public comments. And, um, seven thousand pages of public, uh, comment and record, um, at this point. Um, so it's like, uh, said is pretty monumental effort. Um, but we really did thoroughly vet and take into consideration all the relevant, um, data that was presented, um, by the public. Um, thirty-seven additional supplementary documents were presented by the applicant as well. So, um, there was a lot of, uh, work in a short amount of time to synthesize all that information and get that into the staff report, which is posted on UniDocs. If, um, if anyone's interested in a link to that, you're welcome to it. Um, as well as our, uh, presentations, uh, have also been posted there. So, um, you know, procedurally, and we are in a really good space. Um, and the public has been extremely respectful. Um, I think our technical work has been, um, excellent. And the planning commission as well has been prepared, engaged, um, and asking relevant questions. So, um, from that perspective, I think it's just been an absolute one eighty from the last process. So I'm just, uh, really appreciative of the resources and support of the board of commissioners, uh, staff to help us, uh, with, uh, making, helping us to make that go so smoothly. And, uh, we're heading towards the end of at least the planning commission process. So if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Adrian, uh, I know as of last night, we are looking at maybe fifty-five, uh, for tonight in terms of testifying. Do you have an update on or a prediction in terms of how many at this point?
Yeah. So out of the fifty-five, um, the majority of those folks have ceded their time to fifteen individuals. So each of them have three minutes. Um, we don't know precisely how that's going to add up by five P M. This evening. Uh, we will not have time, um, to go through the entire list. Um, that's still going to be five to six, even seven hours of public testimony depending. So, but, um, that has been very well, um, communicated with the public because this round of public, uh, testimony is supplementary, not required, but supplementary because it's an opportunity for the public to respond to the supplementary, uh, staff report. And it is, uh, been, uh, communicated as limited only to testimony on the new evidence. So the planning commission chair will, um, at his discretion, um, cut people off if they begin repeating themselves or if they're not focused on the new evidence. And that's, when I talk about the new evidence, I'm talking about the supplementary information, the conditions of approval that are, are in the recommendation as well as the thirty-seven, uh, additional, um, uh, exhibits that the applicant submitted to the county.
So timeline, trying to get it, get it right. So last year is tonight, then seven days for written testimony from the general public, but the, the record closes, but is held open for an additional seven days for written testimony from the general public.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Republic, as the requestor, has seven additional days to respond to all those tests, all that testimony. And then the record is officially closed and that's like the twenty-second or twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty-one days after tonight.
Okay, um, wait, sorry. Uh, so tonight, seven days after that is the sixteenth. Um, and then seven days after that is the twenty-third.
Mm-hmm.
So Republic has till the twenty-third to get in their response.
And the county also has, uh, the same amount of time to wrap up their.
Okay. So an additional seven days. And so on July thirtieth, the county is going to finish their, um, analysis.
Correct.
Okay. And then on July twenty, what was July twenty-second?
Uh, July twenty-second, uh, we'll be coming back for a final decision.
Okay. Are you coming, you're coming back before, for a final decision before the timeline has elapsed for the county to, for, for Republic to respond to things and for the county to do a wrap up?
The, that's just for the, the public record, but they'll go into deliberations on the twenty-second.
Okay.
But they have to make a final decision by the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
So they have to make a final decision before the public record is officially closed.
No, the county has seven days to get done after that, seven, seven, and then third, seven.
Yeah, the third, seven is July thirtieth and their meeting is July twenty-ninth to make a decision.
Has to be the decision has to be made before the thirtieth, right?
Yes. So, uh, yeah, this is, this is all been communicated, communicated. So it's not public. It's not public feedback. Um, it's if there's any rebuttal, um, evidence that needs to be put into the record. And, uh, frankly, we're not expecting any because it's all been vetted, um, publicly now last night, um, and their presentation. Um, but they do like to do that and all the public as well likes to keep the record open. Um, and if there's anything that needs to be addressed in, in the record, need to do that. But, um, yeah, so everyone involved is aware that we need to, um, in order to meet our hundred fifty days, make a final decision by the twenty-ninth.
Okay, but the, which means that those seven day timelines are, while that's what's legally they legally have the right to go for seven days. They're going to have like, I just loo- looking at this, Republic will have legally until the twenty-third to file their response to, or their rebuttal. But the planning commission is going to make a decision on the twenty-second.
They're going to start the deliberation.
Start deliberation, but I think you've got the twenty-ninth set as.
Well, you just said if they deny it on the twenty-second, there is no twenty-ninth meeting.
We're not going to have to come back with, um, additional findings. So it's more of a, it's a staff, um, staff burden, the twenty-ninth, there's maybe a formal process, but on the twenty-ninth, the final, if it's for approval, there's going to be a much longer process on the twenty-ninth. Other, other words, in other way, it'll be a five minute, um, virtual meeting just to finalize.
Okay.
Formalize the, it on the twenty-ninth. But and the, the county has no need for the seven days.
Okay.
Uh, so we don't need to utilize, um, the seven days.
So I think commissioner too, I think this schedule has been vetted through Vance and the attorneys we're using and so it clears all the statutory, statutory hurdles that we need to clear. And that last seven days we've talked about for the stat, I mean, that, I mean, we're not, not.
We don't need to drag her.
We don't need, I mean, it, it's really to make sure we do what we need to do for the public and for Republic. So.
Okay. Um, and so if the, whatever decision is made on the twenty-ninth and whatever the findings, the commission decides, if that decision, how long does, does anybody have to appeal that to the board?
So once the decision, it's, um, you have ten days after the notice of decision has been distributed.
Which is probably the next morning because you're not doing it at whatever time, right?
It, it will, um, it will, we try to get them out within two business days, but it will be prepared. Um, both options will have been prepared.
Yeah.
So it goes out immediately.
Okay. So you'll have a notice of decision on the thirtieth, probab-, very likely. And then within ten days, somebody has to appeal it. Or some, if they're going to appeal, somebody would have to do it within ten days. And then how long does the, would the board have to consider the appeal? Cause it's a de novo hearing, right? So thank you everyone for your two thousand pages of testimony. We're doing it all again. Um, so what, how long would, does the board have to consider, or would the board have to consider the application?
Think, um, the final hundred fifty days.
Okay.
Less another extension request by the applicant for some reason. Um, I think it's September eighteenth.
September eighteenth. Okay. So a month and a half-ish.
Yeah, it's very tight.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. These, the timelines of these things are wacky. So I appreciate. Yeah. And you're sharing.
It is. In homage to, to staff and attorneys and such though, too, is that, um, and this is a commitment I made at the beginning of this process is I think our, our highest, um, priority is to procedurally nail this because there are so many nuances and opportunities to mess up.
Yep. Yep.
And those are the things that the applicant wins on at Luba, are those procedural errors. And, um, so far, uh, we're batting a thousand. So, um, my intention is, um, to finish this last, um, two meetings. And I think we have a real, uh, ironclad, um, um, plan in place to be able to accomplish this in a, in a timely manner. Um, the worst thing that would happen is that we go to a writ of mandamus at the end of September. And that essentially means that, um, the applicant, um, moves at, says, okay, so where we're at now, you just need to approve it. And essentially we need to allow them to do that. But, um, it would be an approval with the eighty-seven, um, conditions that we have, uh, presented to them.
So to clarify, written mandate, this means that we didn't do our job on time. And so they're like, well, we just get it because you didn't approve, you didn't consider it at a time limit.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
And then who, who writes the findings? Is that county staff or is that our consultants?
Uh, it's, it's been a collaboration.
Okay.
And it will continue to be, yes.
Thank you.
The September eighteenth, that's the cutoff. And so the board has to, um, decide before then. And so.
It'd probably be September sixteenth would be your, would be the meeting.
And then, um, the, we'd have one meeting. Is that whatever? Whatever we can talk, we can worry about this later.
If it gets appealed to us, I'm sure we'll have to have more than one meeting. Yeah.
It might be, you know, serial meetings like we've been doing too.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, we, we also understand that this is not, it's de novo meeting, it's a de novo hearing, but it's, you will have the entire record with all that information there from that entire process. And that is one of the reasons why we went through such a thorough planning commission process is that you have a full package of a fully vetted quasi judicial process before you to consider. So that you should not be starting from zero or be looking at it that way.
Yeah.
Um, and then if and when it's appealed to Luba, then it's, I mean, we know how fast they're turning, or not fast, they're turning around things.
It, it's slow.
Yes.
And that has to be, um, does that have a timeframe that it has to be, uh, have? Okay.
No.
Whatever.
Yep, be just shoot it into the wind.
So there's no like statute of limitations or something after we make our final decision? They can appeal it to Luba anytime.
Um, well, there's a timeframe to appeal to Luba.
Okay.
I think it's fourteen days to Luba.
Okay, but for, okay, the timeline for Luba coming up with a answer is in depth.
Yeah, I, I mean, it goes in the queue chronologically, right? But it, depending on what their workload is, it could, sometimes it lasts year, years.
Years, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then this is the celebratory part, um, the comprehensive plan and development code update. So those contracts, um, are complete. Um, we went to LCDC, uh, Commissioner Wise and myself on June twenty-seventh and LCDC, uh, unanimously approved the periodic review process, which was fantastic. And they had a lot of complimentary things to say, um, both politically and, um, staff's quality of work, um, to this point. So that was fantastic. And, uh, so the next process is sometime this summer that we'll be putting out the formal applications. So we'll be prepared, uh, to fill that out immediately and get, get ourselves in the queue. Uh, we're the only jurisdiction that applied for periodic review. Um, so we will be prioritized, uh, for that funding.
So funding isn't secured yet though, at this point. And, and, but you still feel the three hundred thousand dollars that you budgeted is probably still reasonable.
And I verbally communicated that intention with our D L C D rep. And it seems that that's reasonable, um, going right for these types of projects over a two-year period at this time. And I, I'm not sure if you want to weigh in on the tone of their response.
I mean, they were positive. They were like, well, why shouldn't we, you know?
Yeah.
Cool.
Uh, and the other thing I really wanted to mention about the LC Citizen Advisory Committee is that we are in the middle of the business, um, Oregon Income Survey to help them, um, have some better data so they'll qualify, uh, for state and federal funding. Uh, that's something they've struggled with because of their low census response rate. Uh, so I'm not sure if the business Oregon effort is going to help with that very much because it really is up to the community, how much they want to help themselves with that information. Um, but that is, um, midstream right now. And then also, um, I've been staffing that, uh, committee for the last year plus. Um, however, uh, John Swanson now, um, who is a senior planner, he's our new code compliance person, but he's also a senior planner by training and, uh, loves that kind of work. And so he's going to, uh, start to do the lays on for that group, um, and help them with that business, uh, income survey. And then, um, they're going to be working on prioritization of focusing on one project. Um, but you know, that could take months to decide to work on a project because as you know, there's, um, several different opinions about which direction to move with LC. I've.
I, I can just leave it to on that one. We've also had a recent, uh, thing with the school and the improvements out there where, uh, ball got dropped a little bit, but with Toby and our building folks and their consultants, we were able to actually get that cleared up in about a week. So they're able to keep going to get the, the work done while the kids are out. Uh, one of the other challenges we have out there, at least I've tried, but, but John is doing a great job of reaching out. I mean, he is very, very good at, at doing what he's doing, um, is that the superintendent out there has resigned. And so I'm not sure who the interim is, uh, but that's always been one person that's kind of been one of the, one of the leaders, co-leaders out there. Uh, and then of course our staff, Public Works, we, we don't do a lot with the, the, the lot we have out there with the gleaners, but the gleaners are still a, a going concern. And every now and then they'll pop up with something that they need from us. But that is also a lot that, uh, I think I recommend in the past, we don't necessarily need anymore. So if it's something that the board would ever want to look at, at surplusing, um, I think Public Works is okay with, with doing that. Is it three plus acre lot out there off of Haynes, Haynes Road, I believe. It's a three-plus acre lot out there off of Haynes, Haynes Road, I believe, so.
Great question. Um, Petra, can I uh, quickly go back to the compliant and development code? Two, two, oh, one question, maybe and a comment. So um, high level, at this point, timeframe around the project itself, what? What are we looking at? I mean, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot on exact dates, but what, what, what are we talking? And I'm asking this question because clearly there's been some recent public discussion in regards to wineries, all, all of these things. And I know that that part of the solution is uh, updating the, the code. What, what are we looking at right now, would you say, in terms of when we'll be done?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a good question because there's different scenarios based on the priorities of the commission, the commission. So there could be an iterative process where we uh, go through legislative um, amendment process with the low hanging fruit.
Okay.
Where there's not going, you don't need to vet um, publicly uh, and have a lot of public outreach on some decisions. May, maybe wineries is a good place to start or the agri tourism, because there has been a lot of public outreach and interaction about those types of things. Um, but the, the whole process um, otherwise is going to go forward. And it's gonna be another two years, probably, before we have a product.
So what point would we, so you speak of the inner process, would I, which I think would, I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but I'm, I'm certain there are probably gonna be priority areas to, to wanna look at. When, when would that start? I guess I, I'm just trying to get a feel for if, I don't know, just hypothetically, if wineries was something that they wanted to, to visit. What, what's like the earliest that something like that could potentially happen?
Yeah, well, my idea was about that was, um, so the, the, when the funding comes out, if we, if we are funded, then immediately after that, um, we develop a work plan. You have a six-month period to do that. Um, I already have a draft. So uh, but at the beginning of that RFP is really an option. Um, you know, it's actually switching into an RFQ where you kind of look at a couple of different scenarios. And one would be um, taking priority um, development code updates on a separate track as you're going through the community um, policy, uh, community outreach and the policy work. Um, and then doing uh, the things that are more administrative or things that the, the board are, are certain that they have consensus about, um, and doing that on a parallel track. Um, so that would be, I think, a really effectual way to um, get some headway um, on some uh, major policy things that we've been sitting on for a while and uh, not stop up the rest of the process.
Guess the mid timeframe.
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, legislative process generally takes uh, six to eight months. And that's, that's our own internal process.
Okay. All right. And then I guess second question and for the boards, and I was, we were gonna talk to you guys a little bit about this yesterday. But we've talked a lot about the regional housing subcommittee, which was born out of the planning commission. And I think initially seen as uh, one of two task force that were sort of aiding and supporting this project. I think, as you know, that's kind of morphed a little bit over time, which brought us back to a discussion that took place here with the budget. Obviously, we didn't have any budgetary funding in relation to that. And so part of my thinking, uh, I've reached out to Gary and Petra about this is how do we maybe bring that back to a place of scoping it within the contact or, or, or the constraints of the planning commission? I, I know Commissioner Ogero at one point had said, well, I thought the, the housing subcommittee was really playing a role in community engagement for the comprehensive planning project to really support housing. And obviously, it was much, much bigger than that, or somehow it got much, much bigger than that. So um, I guess I just wanna put that out there. We don't need to talk about it today, but I would like to kind of get some thoughts and directions from the board in relation to that particular initiative that we have talked about and the idea of how do we h- h- how do we support it? If, if it is gonna ma- maintain itself under the planning commission, how do we support it within the scope of, of the work? Um, and I know Petra's had some, her and I talked about this a year ago. And in terms of how it could potentially be an effective engagement component to help support that. I don't know what all that looks like, but I, I am needing to get some direction in terms of how do we either reshape that? Change it, not do it, whatever the case may, may be. So again, no need to respond unless you'd like to. But eh, I think we need to probably get this on, on our radar and I'll provide some, just some additional input. But I am talking to Petra and Gary about options.
Well, I mean, we are here now, so just comments we want to share. Um, I, I think, you know, all of us, I don't wanna speak for all the commissioners, but in general, we're supportive of housing initiatives and recognize that it is a problem in Benton County. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't have the money, budget to go with the plan as visioned. I can play a commission member. Um, I, I think we, we mentioned something about, you know, potentially having one staff member that can kind of liaise with the cities and I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but um, in my opinion, it has been, I mean, we, we don't have the money to do the big vision. So how do we scale it down and make it feasible?
So during the budget process, I asked specifically about this. And when we were talking about the policy package, and I agree with what Commissioner Wise said that, yeah, we, we agreed as a body that there was not money to go with the, the vision that was in the pot. What um, the county administrator said and uh, the folks at the table said was that there was likely staff capacity to work on some of this. Um, and whether that's with the planning commission or with the board directly, um, I am very supportive and very interested in utilizing that staff capacity to help support housing in our county and region. Uh, I part of me hesitates by engaging the planning. I mean, the planning missions where all these, a lot of this stuff starts, right? And then it comes to us. I don't want them to get out over their skis about what's their jurisdiction and what's their um, wh- what's their uh, charge. Uh, but you know, I, I, I want to engage on regional housing. And um, I was, when I voted on the budget, I, part of that vote included the fact that there was already staff capacity to do it and, or to work on some things. So I, I wanna tell you that.
So there's, there's kind of two, two parts in, in all of this. I do think, you know, back to your point about the budget discussion. You talked about internal capacity within VOC and what kind of um, particularly S and P lining down. And now, what if the, the state processes, there are opportunities for us to maybe do some of the, the work that was envisioned come on policy or ecosystem or engagement on it. So I think that that is still on the table. I think, but I'm, there's still this regional subcommittee that was created under the planning mission. And so I'm just trying to figure out what, what, what happens to that. And does, does that need to be retailored to the point of really supporting this particular project? Or does it just need to go away? Um, and I think that's part of some engagement that will need to happen between board and planning commission. Because that's where it was sort of generating uh, four years ago.
Have a difficult one about, sorry.
No, no.
Eh, like a joint meeting, we haven't met with them in a while could be
Yeah.
Good, after you've had a break.
Yeah, we, we talked about this, uh, we never had landed on anything, Petra, in terms of actually bringing another joint meeting together, did we?
Uh, not landed, but the planning commission is motivated.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think it could be helpful for us to all get all the ideas out on the table, talk about it's feasible. And then everybody have a clear understanding of what the expectations are. Um, and I mean, I, because I still struggle with what was the work? What, what, what exactly is that staff doing? Or what, you know, all the cities are responsible for their own housing. Yes, we wanna be good partners and help them with UGB expansions and all that stuff and make sure that the infrastructure is ready, et cetera. We, you know, the county is not a place to fit density. And, you know, we see examples of legacy streets in Corvallis where there's no sidewalks and no fire hydrants. And like, let's learn from our past mistakes and not do that again. So I just, it's a balance. Um, so what, I mean, yeah, good conversation with plan and commission of what can the county do that's actually helpful and appropriate for our vision?
I think you said it perfectly is, is really kind of down is what's the expectation? What is the, what is it we're wanting to do here? And I think that, to me, was what was probably missing a few years ago is that, okay, we wanna do something with housing. What that was is sort of grew and it was going to be a task force, a part of this plan. And I think there are questions of scope and timing. And so I think it's an opportunity for us to reset, work with the planning commission and maybe figure out, you know, what, what works best. With the understanding, like you said, Commissioner Shepherd, that, you know, there are some other resources and, and what are some, maybe the bigger pieces that we can look at.
I think, you know, I just want to acknowledge, too, there's always political pressure on the elected officials to, you know, we'll throw money at a problem and that's, it sounds like an easy solution. But if there's not an actual plan, you know, don't put money at some, a problem and say, okay, now what are we gonna do with the money? Like, let's figure out what the plan is and then figure out how to fund it. And it can be, you know, if the GT says commissioners didn't approve housing, you know, that's, that's something we have to deal with and the public getting mad at us.
I think we'll be able to provide some thoughts and ideas for you, Petra, just kind of give me a list of sort of different points and thoughts that have sort of proclated up. Uh, and I think the three of us will talk some more and figure out how to give you some, some further direction. I didn't wanna take you down, you know, complete rabbit hole on this. It's just, I really wanted to make sure it was still on your radar. And because this was established, I wanna make sure, I'm constantly getting, you know, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? Well, we're not doing anything at this point. Uh, we're trying to figure out the direction.
And again, I, I didn't mean to speak for all the commissioners, it just.
Yeah, uh, uh, for me, it'd be helpful to review what we're, what we currently have in place. Uh, and then I don't know, review or uh, what's possible. Uh, and um, being realistic with uh, the pretty limited county role. That, that um, it's easy to talk about grand vision and what we should do. And well, what, uh, we've already uh, gone through that uh, fiscal restraints. And in the next two years, we're not uh, doing anything close to a grand vision or uh, significantly uh, changing uh, or what we're trying to do. But uh, in, in a limited way, we, I mean, we have uh, opportunities to uh, talk to Corvallis and uh, make sure that at, at a minimum, we're not impeding um, potential progress. Thank you.
And then I just, sorry, I'm gonna circle back to the winery thing. It's still my desire to try to find a solution for the one way, wrong way. But I think someone was gonna maybe reach back out to them um, after our last board meeting, because they were talking about.
What if they decided not?
Not, yeah.
In the AI, yeah.
And there might be some reasons why, yeah.
And along those lines, it'd be hel- we've heard one side of the story, but there may be um, some of the history here uh, that we're not getting from the um, folks that are, well, wanting things to change.
So one of the things that, uh, read this correctly, correct me if I ate this wrong, Petra, but you have the, where the current winery sits, which is zoned AI, uh, and then you have a, a Jason or a close to lot that's zone EFU. Uh, and I think one of the conversations that maybe came up was, can you put the food truck on the lot that is EFU? Um, to be sort of correlated with winery and think the answer, what I got back from James was that you have to first do that EFU, you and I talked about this, you can't just go and set a, a food truck, right? You have to first have that EFU uh, registered or applied for uh, as a winery. It's gotta be approved as a winery before you can actually then go to the point of putting the food truck. Is that right, Petra?
So, which is the issue that they noted, or that was noted if we just changed. If they wanted to change the whole AI zoning to EFU, they'd still, it's the same process they'd have to go through if they did that.
I think they have to put in the application to change such a.
Okay. Uh, I did, uh, after the meeting, I emailed staff and I got a kind of a history of, of the project and some of the limitations um, that, that are restricting now. And I also, I, I haven't met with the winery yet, but um, and the owner's there. But I think I'm also interested in trying to find some sort of solution to, so that they can have a, a food truck there. It does seem like they are, you know, the, it, i- i- it, it's unfortunate that our, our, end of our zoning is causing this, this kind of a, an issue. So, and I, I don't know what the solution is for that, but I'm, I'm interested in finding, finding something. And if that's a part of this process, I'm, you know, I, I really like the fact that we're going deep into this comprehensive plan and it's a two-year. I'm, I'm a little itchy about it. I'm like, ah, iterative, I'm more of the iterative guy. Because I'm like, there's, there's a lot of things, um, and this isn't even touching on some of the, some of the housing stuff I've, I've talked about before. But just like the, with this winery, I wouldn't want us to think about, sit on it for, for two years uh, as, as, as we go on. So I'm, yeah, I, I'll, I'll just say that I'm, I'm interested in helping them.
I think, you know, what I heard Petra say is there is opportunity for a iterative process. I think, you know, the sort of stages in which that, that process uh, occurs uh, would have to sort of be vetted out. But, but I think we all know that this is certainly, I heard from Petra as well as James, that this is, would be an area that we want to try to resolve or, or be able to create a little bit more consistency. Is that fair?
Yes.
I think it's just a matter of, if we, how do we, how do we uh, move it as fast as possible, right?
Just inter- internally, each legislative process that you peel off of a larger process, of course, is going to um, have costs associated with it. So that's, I think, the major um, downside is the costs associated with um, going on iterative route.
So with that, uh, and, and, and we in Public Works, too, have the, the, our TSP that would, I think, will be updated, actually be made part of the whole process so that we're legit. Uh, so there's other things that will happen as part of it. So it'll be a good process to go through. Um, moving along, if I can just, uh, on this personnel updates, uh, we do have a new building official. He, he's even started this second week. I would have had him here, but he is, uh, his second day, he started going out and doing inspections. I went up to go say hi to him two days in a row and he was out on inspection.
Yeah.
Two days in a row. So you're there on vacation.
Yeah, they're on vacation for two weeks. So, so Jason just had to step right in and, and go do an inspection. So he's hit the ground running. Uh, Petra and I did s- second round, final round interviews on Monday for an assistant planner. It appears uh, an internal candidate is going to be offered that position. Great hire. Uh, and so we'll be able to move forward on that, which will more than likely free up a permit technician spot as well for the building groups. Um, I expect today to hopefully be able to extend an offer to an executive assistant for community development, which has been kind of lacking for a while with having an admin. Uh, great hire, uh, this, this lady will be great for the, the CD. And then uh, after a couple of stops and starts and missed dates, uh, we have, we have learned that Shannon will be back on the twenty-fourth of this month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So she didn't come back this week.
I was, I know that. Let's just say we clarified and the, the correct arrival date is seven twenty-four. And that's pun intended because she's off on maternity. Um, so she'll be back and I think she will obviously play a big role in some of these things that we've talked about today. Uh, and so again, great staff, a lot of great work taking place. And um, uh, the, the, the land use for the landfill has been uh, an extremely, probably, hopefully, once in a lifetime heavy lift. So for, for everybody. Uh, and I get with that, I would just say, Rick, any enterprise or, you know?
Do a really quick update, uh, because I know we're getting close to the end. But um, so we are in the very, very final, final stage. So you might remember the second half of the enterprise permitting. second half of the enterprise permitting, we broke into two phases. Phase one was to finish up the documentation of all procedural components. We'd only done a small piece of that. So all of the permitting processes have all now been officially documented. And this is critical. I sound like, you know, a lot of busy administrative work, but it's really critical for to have that roadmap of here's how we do the processes and being able to discover where the duplications exist. The second part is underway, and I'm happy to say that we came in right exactly where we thought we would be, about twenty thousand dollars left of of work. And this is creating the navigator component of the web. So this is the public out facing piece. One of the things we hear a lot is in a permit, but I don't know who to ask. And so this is going to be a tool that will guide our customers to the right place. As opposed to, I think, we don't have the money to have someone pick up the phone and be able to navigate. We're really looking at this tool to help support the public to get, so that they're not getting kicked around to three or four different types of departments, getting to the right place. So it's a step. You know, we said we paid hundred thousand dollars, which I think we've got good return on all of the work that we've done, and we've got a good plan to continue to work from. We're, we're making some good progress in relation to this. And, you know, who knows, you know, another year from now, we might be taking that in that next stage. So but that should get wrapped up by the end of August. And we come back to you to give a phase two report on that, since that was a BOC investment. Shannon has also been a part of that, but Jen Brown, who's done a great job of really stepping in to help fill in for Shannon while she's been, I really appreciate it. She's been so she and that's it.
Uh, Victor, any anything else in this line?
Oh, real quickly, just legislatively, can't remember the bill number. You probably remember the ones to submit to DEQ and the requirements on nothing.
Oh, seven forty.
So I've been talking to Bailey about that, and he's monitoring that very closely. Once the rulemaking component to that starts, because it will be some rulemaking, I've asked Bailey to make sure she, he's closely monitoring that, but I feel because I know we've tracked that pretty closely, might be worth just giving you an update or making sure you're aware of the rules
Yes.
that are coming forward on that. Because I know, I felt like they kind of bubbled up a little bit last night, Patreon, some of the discussion and monitoring. And so I kind of, I I know that bill is meant to at least provide more capacity. I don't, we'll see how it results.
Do you know who's going to be on the rack? Is it the DEQ's team or they assembling a specific?
It's a DEQ team, is my understanding.
Okay.
And but Bailey is very tuned into that, and he recognized the importance of that to all of us. And I think it's good for us to continue to monitor those.
And one under other for when we get there.
For the good of the order?
Yeah. So thank you to staff for canceling all the meetings yesterday. For lack of forum, yeah, I just for for doing that. But I wanted to ask about the information sharing meeting in a couple of weeks and see if there's an hour on that that we can move yesterday's stuff to, because otherwise we're going to have to go like in deep into August to discuss things. And I know that's a late timeline for your, for the evaluation stuff. And so the information sharing is already on there and you're gone next week, so we can't schedule it. So I just want to see if there's publicly ask if there's time and then, but that people's.
Have a draft of like upcoming meetings. I know we have some, yeah, we'll, I'll work with the agenda setting team to make sure we get that rescheduled for a good time. So you're saying your preference would be information sharing?
My preference is soon, and so and that was the nearest meeting.
Because we're we're not having a board meeting next Tuesday.
Correct, yeah.
We can also schedule a special meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I know it's hard to coordinate with the three of our schedules if if it's not already on the calendar. So I mean, whatever, whatever works, but I just want to say my preference is sooner, so that we can have those conversations.
Okay.
I do think you have another department head meeting. Or no, no.
Have one next week and it moves. Even though I said they can do it, but they don't mean.
So if it is, you need some time in a public setting, always, I know Boris said in the past, you always add certain things to meetings like this one.
Whatever, whatever works, I just, yeah.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. With that, we'll adjourn at eleven fifty seven AM.